Good morning, everyone. The May 1st, 2013 meeting of the City Council is now called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, under closed caption for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, some customers of Cox Communications who do not have a cable box may view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the Internet at www.kclvtv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV in the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and -- I can't get that word out yet -- suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits to the back of the chambers, out to the mezzanine. Proceed out the double doors to the terrace down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please be sure to check with our marshal or fire officials for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewiston First, and employees wearing safety vests or city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you may complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, and the clerk's office are at the rear of these chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there's anyone present today who has need for hearing-impaired equipment, please come forward and see the clerk's staff. And if you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you entered chambers, please exit to your right and then see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please ride for our prayer? And I do want to mention at this time, our councilwoman, Tarkanian, is doing very well on the road to recovery. And so at this moment, we are going to remain standing for a moment of silent prayer because we have so many of so many different religions in our community. And so if you will join me in a moment of silent prayer, including councilwoman Tarkanian and those who you hold dear and near, and then we will follow with the pledge of allegiance and our ceremonial. Thank you. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now we'll proceed with the ceremonial portion. Little spring color right in the center here. A little dark over there. Fair. Okay, are we all? I love these three. They're always here on time. How about the gentleman in the back, the oldest member, who was born and raised in our city and loves Las Vegas? We can't do anything without you. We are a very cohesive group, and I want to say before we start this portion, I hope you all know that last city council, we recognized that very large group from Red Rock Search and Rescue. Two hours. Once they got permission from the National Parks Service, they were out there. Two hours it took them to find our missing cab driver. So it is wonderful, and that's entirely volunteer, but congratulations to our Red Rock Search and Rescue. So this is a ceremonial portion of the agenda, and for our first item, Mayor Pro Tem Anthony is going to recognize the May Citizen of the Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, everyone. Good to see you all here. Good to see Desert Shores here. It's always a good thing. The last four years representing Ward 4, it's been honored to represent a really great community right in the middle of Ward 4, and that's the Desert Shores community. And it's such a great place to live. I mean, it's a great place to raise a family, and walk your dogs, and walk your kids, and go to the lagoon, and go swimming, and have picnics, and go to the lakes, and go fishing. And I don't know if you can feed the ducks, but you can at least hang out with the ducks. So you can't feed the ducks? I can't remember what the rules on that. But it's such a great place to live, and I think the main reason why it's a great place to live is because of our Citizen of the Month that we're going to honor today, and that's Rita Peterson. Rita, would you please come up here? Give her a nice round of applause. It's -- Rita is the general manager for the Desert Shores Community Center, and I've had the privilege of working with her the last four years, and I know Becky and Anthony over there have also had the privilege of working with Rita. By the way, it's Anthony's birthday today, so a little birthday applause for Anthony. Very good. Unfortunately, Rita is retiring, and today is her last day. And it's unfortunate for us, it's fortunate for her, because she gets to spend a lot of time with her family and with her granddaughter. So this is a bad thing for us, it's a great thing for her, and I couldn't think of anybody else that I should honor today as the Las Vegas Citizen of the Month. So let me tell you a little bit about Rita. Rita was first introduced to the Desert Shores community in July 2002, and had the immediate impact upon the neighborhood because she spearheaded the massive ZeroScape Water Conservation Project for Desert Shores so they could receive the incentives from the water district. Rita was always cognizant of the developer's vision and unique brand of community by recognizing it was a home to both the desert and the shores. And Rita went out of her way to preserve these standards when she presented the Lake Landscaping Guidelines in July 2007, which was adopted by the board. Rita supervised the construction of the micro park on the corner of Mariner and Regata, the landscaping alongside and inside the lagoon, and the completion of the community entrances on Regata and Soaring Gulls. During Rita's tenure, many more projects were completed, which added to the beauty of Desert Shores and the values of the homes inside. These projects included community signage projects, which tied the neighborhood and the lakes together with the unifying theme, updating and remodeling the clubhouse, refreshing the lagoon area and its facilities, and updating the association offices to provide better functionality to serve the homeowners. Beyond these projects, to keep community updated, Rita knew the most important part of her job was to impeccably maintain what Desert Shores already had. In doing so, Rita worked very closely with the landscaping contractors, but she also worked very closely with my office in the City of Las Vegas. Rita's worked very closely with our Public Works Department and traffic engineers on the installation of speedminders on Harbor Island and Mariner, and crosswalks on Soft Winds and Regata. Rita's worked closely with our Parks Recreation and Neighborhood Services Department by applying for and receiving grant funding from the City of Las Vegas Neighborhood Partners Fund in 2006 and 2008. In 2006, Desert Shores received a $3,700 grant to be used towards new community signage, and in 2008, Desert Shores received a $2,500 grant to be used for their 20th anniversary project. Rita's worked closely with my office on the annual National Night Out event, Eagle Scout beautification projects, and our annual shredding event that we hold in Desert Shores. Rita's also coordinated community events such as fishing derbies, kayak races, traditional parties like Memorial Day and Labor Day, in an effort to make Desert Shores one of the best masterplan communities in the City of Las Vegas. Therefore, on behalf of the mayor, myself, and the entire city council, I want to thank Rita for her 11 years of service to Desert Shores, the residents there, and the City of Las Vegas, and honor her as the Citizen of the Month in the City of Las Vegas. Thank you, Rita. And with that, I'd like to present you with a plaque that says Citizen of the Month, May 2013, and for the next month, this sign over here will be out on Main Street, right in front of City Hall, with your name on it, so you can take all your friends and family out there and get a picture for the entire month. So congratulations, you deserve it, Rita. Great job.
Thank you so, so much. Thank you, thank you. Oh, wow. Thank you so much. Thank you. Mayor Goodman, thank you so much. Stavros, thank you, councilman, thank you so much. I'm overwhelmed. This is just an overwhelming experience, and to see my Desert Shores board members, past board members, friends, my family, Steve and Laura, thank you so much for coming from St. Louis. Wow, just to see all of you, I love you all, and thank you just for all the support that you've given me over the past 11 years. And in those years, working with the city, you know, you hear about big City Hall, and you can't fight City Hall. Well, I've never tried to fight it. I've tried to work with it, and it works, it really works. Desert Shores has benefited from that experience that we've had, a good one, as it's been. And overall, I was just talking to one of my ladies over here, and, you know, I came from Scotland a long, long, long time ago, and who knew that a little girl from Scotland who would come through St. Louis to end up in Las Vegas and be Citizen of the Month only in America? Thank you, thank you so much. It's such a pleasure.
I have two questions.
Questions.
If I do. Number one, where's your kilt?
Oh, you know what? I could have done that.
All right, now Councilman Ross is on to you for next year, for sure. And the second question was this lofty resume you have, all this service. How come you didn't file to run against Councilman Anthony? No, 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 he's the best. But my gosh, were you lucky she didn't file? So you've got four years now, you're protected. But anyway, congratulations for us. And I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I knew those were good questions.
Thank you so much. You're all wonderful. Thank you.
And I just want to thank the Desert Shores community and the board for coming down and supporting Rita, and apparently you're going to have a little party out in -- it's City Hall, right outside these doors here, with the little food and beer and wine, no, probably just water and coffee. Okay, so.
Sure you're going. I know you're leaving your job.
So let's get a picture taken over here with the sign. Now, why don't you all come up here? Come on. Get your picture taken, and then you go out and party.
Now, I have to ask, did you go out and look at the food?
No, I haven't.
Do you want to take a five-minute break for yourself? We'll stall this down.
For me?
Yes. Please, go out and then report back to us. Because Councilman Anthony, everybody who knows him well knows he loves a good piece of food. What a great event. I remember Desert Shores areas in the old days when there was nothing there but desert. Are the lakes stocked with fish?
Yes.
What kind of fishing?
That I don't know.
What kind of fish? Is there a license as to how much you may catch?
No, but if catching is, we have to have a Desert Shores ID card.
Oh. And where does one get that? Oh, I like that, but I want to keep those little -- what are those little Greek things that you fry up?
Sardines?
The little -- no, 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 there's something else. What are they?
Galamati.
No, 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 it's a little small, tiny fish. Well, that's close enough, minnow-like. Congratulations, have a good party. Congratulations, great, great.
Your husband may have a card.
Oh, okay. I'm not sure I'm going to give it to him. Thank you. Congratulations.
We're still going to get you in the lagoon.
Okay. Uh-oh. Pleasure.
Last time we were here for this, your husband was mayor. You are so welcoming, so warm, just as he was. You make us proud to Las Vegas.
That's all it is. Some of the board members were complimenting my husband, let them try to live with him for 50 years. Okay, we are going to continue on, and before I go to our final item, no, maybe I'll do the item first, then the final item will be comments from Councilman Coffin. And this is for the item, I have the pleasure of recognizing an outstanding group of employees here at the City of Las Vegas, and I'd like to ask our Cultural Affairs Director Nancy Deener and Operations and Maintenance Deputy Director Steve Ford -- oh, you look lovely and springy -- to join us at the podium for this presentation. The Action Team Award recognizes a team of employees that strives to be superheroes in the workplace, meeting our values of action, which stands for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. The May Action Team is made up of six city employees who've worked together to make this new City Hall building come alive with beautiful artwork. I'd like to invite this group to join us at the podium, please. First, we have Lisa Stamanis. Then we have Jeannie Voltura and Noel Garcia from the Office of Cultural Affairs. We also have three employees from our Operations and Maintenance Department, Terry Schockenmeyer, Mike Sanford, and Stanley Grants. All you have to do is stroll through our fabulous new City Hall to see the work of this team. They've done an outstanding job of making this wonderful building into a place that's inviting to the public and features work from our local artists, and I see them all the time, almost daily we are requesting. Lisa, Jeannie, and Noel have worked tirelessly to acquire art for the building, as well as managing the temporary art displays on the first and second floors. Currently, there are more than 100 pieces of art throughout City Hall. We have everything from oil on canvas to multimedia sculpture, and even a couple of giant garden gnomes out on our second-floor patio. With Lisa, Jeannie, Noel gathering all of this wonderful art, it falls to these guys on my right, Mike, Terry, and Stanley, to make sure that each piece is installed properly and tastefully here throughout the building. You often see the three of them hanging on ladder -- they're not hanging on ladders. Maybe you are hanging on ladders. Standing on ladders, installing brackets and hanging systems to ensure that the public may view the works of our wonderful, talented local artists. Certainly, this team is a great example of two departments working together to make the City Hall the people's building, and that's something that we all really appreciate. Congratulations to each of you, and we do have a certificate for each one of you. We'd be happy to hear from Nancy, then Steve, and then again, if there's a spokesman, or you all want to say something, but within a reasonable length of time. Nancy.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. You know, it's a great pleasure, and I'll make this very quick. When we moved into this building, a lot of work was done before we moved into this beautiful building in terms of the visual team had to catalog, go every department, all the floors, they're still photographing the collection. Once we moved over here, I think it's because of the light, the beautiful light in this building, and the walls cried out for art, I got stopped all the time saying, where's our art? Where's our art? It was like, it was fantastic, I have to say. So the visual team had to get in gear really quickly, they were inundated with requests, and they were busy, 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 and they could not have done it without the maintenance team. I mean, I would see these people, I would see Jeannie, I would see Lisa out with tape measures and carts, I'd see the guys kind of going -- and it was really fantastic, it was a beehive of activity, and it was wonderful. And I think also, in addition to this building, I think that everybody in this building is kind of on board with the arts renaissance going on downtown. So everybody embraces arts, including the City Hall employees. I'm not sure if anybody -- Lisa, would you like to say just a brief?
I want to thank the mayor and city council for their support of the arts. It's really exciting to work for the City of Las Vegas and work with Jeannie and Noel to place art throughout this beautiful building. We're continuing to work with Las Vegas artists to feature them in City Hall. I know they're really thrilled to be here, and we'll just continue to bring art into this building, so. And I want to thank the artists also for loaning their artwork for this program.
Okay, Steve.
Your turn.
Thank you. I'd like to just thank Nancy for putting our folks in with this award and this acknowledgement. We've got a great staff, got a real can-do attitude. If it can be done, we'll figure out a way to do it, and these three exemplify that. We're very proud of them. Thank you very much.
And there's a height requirement in this department?
I don't meet that.
I know. That's why I said it. Congratulations from all of us, and we congratulate you all. We're so proud of the work you do, and they just are so gentle and kind, not disturbing any work at all that's going on in the offices. Thank you, Nancy. We're just so proud of you and really appreciate it. Lisa, thank you, and thank you, this is so exciting. And beyond the permanent collection, which seems to be establishing itself in the whole area of City Hall, in the mayor's office, it's a rotating showcase for local artists because we really want to give as many as we can the exposure. Nancy and the guys have just been wonderful working with us to keep those pieces moving because we really want to get them out. And so our final item this morning, we have Councilman Coffin.
We have just a few minutes here at the end of the agenda on the subject of Mexican holidays. I think that you see Cinco de Mayo posted on this agenda, and I think it is time to recognize that Cinco de Mayo is a wonderful holiday in the state of Puebla. It is very important for people of Mexican descent, and of course, other Latin American people celebrate with, and of course, we all celebrate together. May 5th, May 5th would be this Sunday, so that is Cinco de Mayo. But I want to say something about Cinco de Mayo as a good excuse to party and have a great time and come down, there's lots of that happening. But remember that that is not the most important Mexican holiday, and that's why we don't have a celebration going on here today. We don't have bands, we don't have all our typical native costume people, because we're going to have that in September. Because September 16th is the true day of celebration. It's the day of independence of Mexico, as it won its freedom from the Spanish colonial forces. The Battle of Puebla, which is celebrated by Cinco de Mayo, has to do with the defeating of a very large French army force which invaded 40 years, 50 years after independence to attempt to establish a throne on Mexican soil. On that day, the Mexicans defeated a goodly larger Mexican force. Now, it didn't kick them totally out of the country. The French really realized they were up against something. Well, they only stuck around for a short time, and they left. And yet, that memory of that battle, because it is a true battle of underdogs who defeated the larger force, that still sticks and should be celebrated. But come September 16th, that's when we really have a celebration here to honor Mexican independence. And all of Latin America celebrates independence in the month of September, the dates vary depending on when word of the independence actually arrived, actually arrived, that the Spaniards were leaving, and that's the big day. So if you see something missing today, understand that from this Mexican-American, it's a reason why all Spanish states celebrate independence. Only a few Mexican states actually support or celebrate in their own country on the 5th of September. But let's celebrate it anyway, just like we celebrate St. Patrick's Day on the 17th, I think it is, of March. Why not? It's a good excuse to party, and we're a party city. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, we'll move right forward into our agenda, please. Gentlemen. We're on to item nine. Okay. Who's missing? Where's the Mayor Pro Tem and Councilman Barlow? Wow. Are they aware? Okay. Thank you. Please get me posted. Thank you. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items on the agenda. If anyone submitted a speaker card or who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. We will set the time limit at one minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I urge you to approve items 14, 15, 27, 28, 35, and 36. Those have to do with the trail projects, and I want to say that they're doing an excellent job out there.
Thank you.
On the second item that I wanted, is item number 18, and I disapprove of that. In the news lately, it was reported that the banks are sitting on over 52,000 vacant homes. And this Bank of America, these people, were paid by Congress to help the homeowners out, and instead of doing that, they took the money that Congress gave them, and they gave it back in dividends to their stockholders. It was absolutely unconscionable. In the backup, I gave you a backup packet, and in that backup packet, it shows how North Dakota avoided --
together, bringing industry stakeholders together to put these codes, all the codes and standards, including energy codes, through a process that develops consistency throughout the area. And if you change this, you're going to change that consistency because of the rest of the jurisdictions, the county and North Las Vegas, and that will not have that amendment. The last thing I guess I'd say is that the investment in existing buildings is a very good investment. When you're doing energy efficiency, it's the best investment you can make for the future. It's about two to four cents a kilowatt hour. You can't buy energy that cheaply anywhere else. So it's a good investment. It makes your buildings more competitive, more usable, more livable for the folks that are going to be redeveloping them.
Thank you very much, and you know we are totally vested in sustainability and being green. So we have a great group working on that all the time.
You're very much a leader nationally.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Jennifer Turchin. I'm also here to speak on item 41. I'm a resident of the city of Las Vegas and the current president of the USGBC Nevada Chapter. The USGBC Nevada Chapter correspondence reaches over 4,000 residents statewide that represent hundreds of businesses and organizations, and I would like to voice my opinion regarding the International Energy Conservation Code. Energy codes save money through increasing building energy efficiency and conservation. This reduces our dependence on foreign energy sources and prevents our state from having to add additional power plants. Additionally, energy codes save money as continually raising energy costs means there is more money invested in our local economy by business owners that don't have to pay those rising energy costs. And energy codes increase comfort, health, and durability of buildings, increasing the value of those buildings, and reducing liability for design professionals and builders. The USGBC Nevada Chapter has a mission to educate and promote green building codes in our state, and we are here to assist with the educational needs of our community to ensure that all those involved with the construction and renovation of buildings understand the importance of energy codes and how to implement them without causing unnecessary expenses. I'd like to ask that all those in the audience that are here to support the continued implementation of the 2009 IACC, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, and I did misread that Jim Myers and Kenneth Baker are both here on item 41.
Yes.
Not 44. Thank you. Anyone else? Morning.
My name is Jennifer Turchin. I'm also here to speak on item 41. I'm a resident of the city of Las Vegas and the current president of the USGBC Nevada Chapter. The USGBC Nevada Chapter correspondence reaches over 4,000 residents statewide that represent hundreds of businesses and organizations, and I would like to voice my opinion regarding the International Energy Conservation Code. Energy codes save money through increasing building energy efficiency and conservation. This reduces our dependence on foreign energy sources and prevents our state from having to add additional power plants. Additionally, energy codes save money as continually raising, rising energy costs means there is more money invested in our local economy by business owners that don't have to pay those rising energy costs. And energy codes increase comfort, health, and durability of buildings, increasing the value of those buildings, and reducing liability for design professionals and builders. The USGBC Nevada Chapter has a mission to educate and promote green building codes in our state, and we are here to assist with the educational needs of our community to ensure that all those involved with the construction and renovation of buildings understand the importance of energy codes and how to implement them without causing unnecessary expenses. I'd like to ask that all those in the audience that are here to support the continued implementation of the 2009 IACC, please stand up and be recognized. Thank you.
Thank you, and I did misread that Jim Myers and Kenneth Baker are both here on item 41.
Yes.
Not 44. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward.
My name is Chris Fenton. I'm a Nevada architect. I'm a Las Vegas resident and a member of the AIA, and I also would like to speak against item 41. I am in support of the International Energy Code, and I think it's important that we do maintain the code as it is. It is important that the Southern Nevada area has all consistent codes. It's been very good for architects to have that. When it comes to adaptive reuse, when a building is changed, modified, it should comply with the latest codes. That's what has happened with public safety. We recommend that for energy codes as well. The goal for the area, of course, is to have consistent codes and amendments throughout. That's been much appreciated from the local architects. In sustainability and maintaining, improving building stock with, when they are adapted to be brought up to code, energy-wise, we definitely support that. So there is some flexibility in the energy code in terms of modeling the energy code. You don't have to go exactly with what's on it. You can prove that it has the efficiency through other, with the adaptation and showing the efficiencies. So it's not, there is some flexibility in the code, and we'd recommend that this be heard further in committee.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? If you all weren't so scared of sitting up front, like in classrooms, you wouldn't have such a long walk to the microphone.
Thank you. I'm Jim Myers. I actually have a few handouts for you.
Okay, thank you.
It's an organization, IMT Institute for Market Transformation. Well, Jim Myers, I'm from the Southwest Energy Efficiency Project, and I reside in the Denver, Colorado area, but we do have staff here. Actually, we're hiring one additional person to come into the Las Vegas or the Carson City area. But I work with building codes, and I just want to reiterate some of the comments that the other speakers have said. The pamphlet that I sent out to you, provided for you, shows the flexibility with existing buildings, and the codes, the international codes, which are a U.S.-based organization, are very flexible, from the construction codes through the energy codes. I wanted to mention that just recently, that organization that printed that brochure, IMT funded a report through UNC Chapel Hills, and they show in that report that energy-efficient homes are less likely to default. So we know those things, that if buildings, if building owners and homeowners have lower utility bills, that assists them with their everyday bills that they have. I also want to say that I drafted, or I authored a report in 2012 on best practices in building jurisdictions, and one of the case studies was Las Vegas because of the exemplary work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else, please come forward? Morning.
Good morning. My name is Terry Mayfield. I'm the executive director of the Glazing Association of Nevada, and I want to endorse the efforts that the private sector and the public sector has done in completing and working together on developing codes throughout the valley, municipalities and the county. They bring in experts from all over the United States on different areas, and in this particular area, manufacturers, contractors, building code officials have worked diligently, done their due process, and worked very closely to develop an energy code that should be adopted, unified by all the municipalities in the county.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward? Hearing none, seeing none, we will move on to item number 10. For possible action, any items that the council staff or applicant wish to be stricken, table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. I have three items. The first item is number 14 on the consent agenda. That's bid number 13.16736 DC, Las Vegas, Wash, pedestrian bridge and Phase 2 trails. Staff has asked that to be stricken. Item number 43 on discussion, second amendment to the exclusive negotiated agreement between the city of Las Vegas, Nevada, and Sanford World Clinics. Staff has asked that to be stricken. And then item number 44, which is an abeyance item, discussion for possible action regarding award of contract number 130052BR, Deferred Compensation Services, Department of Human Resources Award recommended to International City Management Association Retirement Corporation. I'm going to ask that be obeyed till June 5th. There's been a lot of discussion that there hasn't been enough dialogue between city management and city employees to make sure that everybody has information on this deferred compensation program. So between now and January 5th, there hopefully, I'm sorry, June 5th, there will hopefully be a lot of dialogue between everyone, so we understand exactly what's going on here, what the recommendation is, and then we'll bring it back to the city council for continued discussion. So that will be my motion.
Thank you. There's some comments here. Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Mayor. I just spoke with Karen Duddelson, and if you're willing, we'd like to obey item number 45.
Okay, so I'll include item number 45, discussion for possible action regarding an appeal of work card denial request for Jarrett Applewhite at Pizza Lounge, 410 South Rampart Boulevard, Suite 120, in Councilman Beers' office, and you would like that obeyed till?
Two weeks.
Like that in two weeks, and that would be May 15th.
So that is, again, you had initially mentioned it was stricken, now it is amended to be obeyed.
That's the fourth item. We have item 14, 43, 44, and then Councilman Beers included 45.
Okay.
So those are four items that are part of my motion.
Okay. Thank you very much. And Councilman Coffin?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
45 is being obeyed, not stricken.
Abayed, thank you very much. And Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, your honor. I just wanted to make sure that, because a lot of people have traveled here for item 44? Yes. So that they're encouraged to engage in discussions and be prepared then for a full discussion at that agenda on June 5th. Is that correct? We will have, try to make our decision that day, obviously, but we're going to, we're going to take testimony, right? Because there are a lot of people that traveled here today to testify on it, so I think it's important that we make sure that they know that if they come back, they will not be wasting their time.
Well, as of today, the motion is to obey it till June 5th. What happens between now and June 5th, I don't know, but that's the motion today.
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Is that for us, council?
If I could jump in, and I kind of just thinking out loud here. I've had conversations with staff this morning about this. I believe this item is going to be obeyed for until June, but as part of this item, and any item, sometimes you have protests, and as we are all well aware, Hartford is protesting the award to ICMA today. Since the item's not going to be heard, the question is, do we wait until the June meeting to hear the protest and hear it all at once, or do we pull the protest out separately? I think the current plan is, and I'm looking at management federal guidance here, is to have another line item at the next meeting that deals just with the Hartford protest. And then, two weeks after that, you vote up or down on the ICMA thing. So I don't want you to tell people, or don't want the council to tell people that this will be 30 days from now, or two meetings from now, when it might be two weeks from now that the protest is heard. So anybody who has any interest in the protest
Okay.
needs to be aware that that line item will probably be introduced by the end of business on Thursday of this week.
Can we give a date certain that the protest will be heard at a council meeting? Is that what staff concurs with?
Yes, we can bring the protest separately, and our intention is to bring it on May 15th.
Okay, so I think that needs to be a motion to do that, correct?
No. All you have to do is obey the item today. Staff is going to add the item on their own. They don't need direction from council to do that.
The action today obeys the contract decision to June 5th, but the protest will be heard on May 15th.
So that will be a matter of record from the clerk's office, that protest will be heard on May 15th? I want to be very clear, because that's part of the issue, the communication of our information here.
It'll be a new agenda item.
A new agenda item on May 15th that will be posted.
Correct.
Correct, and we do not need a motion to do that. Okay. Yes, Councilman Coffin?
Just for clarification, of course, lawyers being lawyers, we need to make sure that lawyers say there is no loss of position, no particular surrendering of legal position as far as this goes, and I assume that they're going to protest, and we just have to make sure we dot all the i's on this.
That's correct.
So that in fact, this would not cause a diminution of the protester's position.
No, it's not.
So there is a, goodness, we've had a motion, and already vote, please. And those were on items, just could you read them again, please, because of discussion?
Items 14, 43, 44, and 45.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote, and please post. Thank you, that carries. We'll move on to item number 11. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the special city council meeting of April 8, 2013, the regular city council meeting of April 17, 2013 is their motion, Mayor Pro Tem, to approve the minutes, please.
I will make that motion.
There's a motion, please vote, and please post. Thank you, motion carries. We'll move on to item 12. Okay, what is that one? All right, items 12 through 38, with the exception of 14, is that correct? On the consent agenda are considered to be routine or recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council wishes to bring forward? Okay, there's a motion. Oh, you're going to make a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 12 through 38, except for item 14.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote, and please post. Thank you. And we will move on to item number 39, report regarding the United Way of Southern Nevada's 2012 community assessment in reference to all awards. Good morning.
I'm Maggie Plaster from the city manager's office. I did a presentation on April 3rd for the citizen survey, and at that time, Mayor Goodman, you requested that we ask United Way to come here and give a report on their most recent community assessment. Cass Palmer is here today to speak about that. He's going to talk about the United Way of Southern Nevada's mission and the results of their assessment. Cass Palmer has been president and CEO of United Way of Southern Nevada for two years, and prior to that, he served on their board for 14 years. And before I turn it over to Cass, I'd just like to point out that the city has two main partnerships with United Way. In addition to our payroll deduction program that we participate in, the mayor serves on the nonprofit CEO group that the United Way convenes once a month, and we work with United Way to bring volunteers downtown through our Downtown Volunteer Ambassador Program.
Thank you, Ms. Plaster. Welcome back. This is your second home, or maybe your first home, Mr. Palmer.
First home.
Good.
Madam Mayor, Councilman, thank you for the opportunity today to talk to you about our community assessment. I brought the author of our community assessment, Mr. Jeremy Aguero, with us to answer any technical questions or issues regarding the assessment. My name is Cass Palmer, for the record. I'm president and CEO of United Way of Southern Nevada, and?
My name is Jeremy Aguero, for the record. I'm a principal analyst with Applied Analysis.
Before we get into the actual assessment, I just want to position why we do an assessment every three years. We've done one in '03, '07, and now in '12, and we've got phenomenal information, but to position it properly, a little bit about United Way first. There's 1,200 United Ways across the nation, 1,400 across the globe, 53 years in Southern Nevada, and for context, we're 16th largest out of those 1,200 United Ways. UWSN, United Way of Southern Nevada, has proven systems and history of accountability. We're good fiscal managers, good stewards of the dollars, and we've got a top Forbes ranking. The accolades for United Way go on for pages, and I abbreviated that for time. But the mission of United Way of Southern Nevada is really to work to advance the common good through our focus on education, health, and financial stability, the building blocks of a good life. When I say that, the last half of our mission, the real focus of United Way of late is convening the community, getting people together to understand the issues and to come up with reasonable solutions to these answers, or to these issues. So we recruit the people and organizations from around the community who bring the passion and expertise and resources needed to get things done. This is a recent award.
Las Vegas, a city of contrasts. Glitz, glamour, high unemployment, housing foreclosures. With more than 2 million residents, 300,000 students, almost half will not graduate. And what becomes of the dropout? More importantly, what becomes of the high school graduate? Whatever she wants. She'll live longer and better. She'll fulfill her dreams. Her success is like a ripple in the water, flowing out and touching so many people around her. It will touch her classmates. It will touch her classmates, it will touch her friends, her family, her community. For helping one, helps so many others. So how can we move more kids from one path to another? Get them on the right path from the very beginning. Get all children a quality preschool education. The United Way provides scholarships and teacher training programs for underserved kids, helping get children on the right path from an early age. To stay on the path, a child must be healthy. Through United Way programs, we help provide dental care, preventative health care, and immunizations, allowing children to have healthier lives, better school attendance, and therefore, a greater connection to their school. As children grow, we have to prepare them for secondary education and for real life. Learning how to create budgets, balance a checkbook, and how to save for their long-term needs and goals. And during the difficult and critical high school years, we ensure young people living on the edge have a place to find comfort, guidance, and motivation. Through high school family engagement and resource centers, kids have the resources they need to grow, or just have a person to talk to. Families are a critical factor to the success of our youth. Through family engagement, families receive guidance about how to better support and lift up their families, and how to spot the warning signs if their kids are getting off the path. And the United Way provides financial support programs ensuring that the family can not only survive, but can build a long-term financial support system that can weather the storm. No matter who you are, no matter where you live, the path touches us all. It reaches into every neighborhood. It defines our community and determines our future. For every person's life we touch, for every child we keep on the path, we can change the lives of so many. With tens of thousands supporting United Way, our donors, partners, and volunteers know that their support helps so many neighbors, friends, and coworkers. Through our focus on the building blocks of a good life, health, education, and financial stability, we are advancing the common good for all people. And through our partnership with nearly seventy accredited local agencies, we help nearly one in four people living in Southern Nevada across a number of issues and needs. With an army of dedicated volunteers, we help build our community from the ground up. One by one, person by person, we are building a healthier community. Driving collective impact by bringing together the best and brightest, together, we can change the path. Together, we are changing the path. Together, we live united.
We're very proud of that video. It's won a couple of national awards, Marcon Award and Silver Addy Award here on the national market. But the film really positions United Way's mission, and that's really to graduate our students on time with a high school diploma, so that ultimately, they stay out of the social services network. In order to achieve that, we spent a lot of time back here in the time continuum, early childhood ed. Pre-K, K, first grade is where we spend a lot of our focus, keeping kids in school. Health, education, financial stability focuses us on keeping them in school. They stay in school, they do better in school, they do better in school, they graduate, they graduate, they stay out of our social service network. Our vision at UWSN is we believe Southern Nevada is a community where all people can achieve their human potential, through a solid educational foundation, financial stability, and healthy lives. We're in a tough community right now. I've got forty years plus here in Las Vegas, and I love the community. I've been accused of working for the Chamber of Commerce on numerous occasions, but there's tough times out there. Thirty to forty percent of the kids here don't have health insurance. Las Vegas rates low in on-time graduation rates. Unemployment is one of the highest in the country, and nearly six thousand kids are homeless as we speak right now. That's why we focus in on health, education, and financial stability. Ten years ago, we used to finance or fund any nonprofit that asked for dollars. We asked that proverbial question nationwide, are we making impact? And through that conversations with communities from here to New York to Mayberry RFD, we closed our focus and got more strategic on health, education, and financial stability. And the next slide says... How do we just go to? Couple of, some of our results in the last couple of years, we've been very successful helping out the citizens of Las Vegas, predominantly the youth. Seventy-three thousand children aged birth to ten, we give shots, our Shots for Tots programs. Eight hundred eighty thousand immunizations community-wide, sixty-four hundred children with preventative medical care free, medical care given right there on the school grounds, fifteen thousand dental services without cost to families. In our education initiatives, we provide six hundred students preschool scholarships at the, in the neighborhood of around three thousand dollars per scholarship. So we want low-income individuals to access to quality education. Twenty thousand high school students and the families with increased information and more graduation rates through our family engagement resource centers at five local high schools. We've given forty-two thousand hours of professional development training to early childhood. We brought the curriculum called High Scope into early childhood education initiatives here. Preschool's problem was, teachers didn't know how to train on it or teach it. So we taught the trainers how to teach. So we're doing well. In our financial stability section, we do earned income tax credits. In the last couple of years, eleven thousand, over eleven thousand tax returns, seven and a half million in tax credits, and fifteen-three in tax refunds. Seven and a half million in tax credits, the earned income tax credits, which is a subsidy right back here to Las Vegas. More than eleven thousand elementary school kids participate in financial literacy, letting them know how to set up a bank account and potentially buy a car later on in life and a house. With that, fact-based analysis leads to lasting change. At United Way of Southern Nevada, we're all about return on investment. We have over thirty thousand investors or donors giving dollars to us. Typically, it's five dollars a paycheck, twenty-six paychecks, a hundred and thirty dollars. They want and demand access to information. That's what, that's one of the main reasons why we do a community assessment, to reassure that our programs are on track for the community needs. With that, the community assessment in two thousand and twelve, we enlisted the aid of Mr. Aguero to come up with a three-phase program. Phase one was the identification of those issues in our community, which Jeremy's going to walk through. Phase two was to take those results and to give to Rob Lang over at the Williamsian Student Brookings at UNLV, and let him go out into the national search for best practices. Phase three, bring those best practices back here to Las Vegas, convene the community around those issues, and then come up with some solutions. We're not grandiose in terms of education, we're going to fix education. But as we look at the data, we can quickly go down and say, realize that, wait a minute, English as a second language is one of the main issues within education affecting our graduation rates, and maybe we spend more time on ESL programs. Something of that nature will come out of this third phase of the assessment. But with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jeremy and let him walk through the community assessment per se.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Madam Mayor, for the record, my name's Jeremy Aguero, again with Applied Analysis. First of all, I want to express my thanks for the opportunity to be here today and to work with Cass and his team on this project. The United Way is an amazing organization, all of the things that Cass just laid out, and I think we did some good work in terms of helping them do what they do even better. The community assessment really had a primary goal of trying to really narrow down where we could focus our time, energy, and effort. The reality of it is, is that our community faces a great number of problems, we cannot do everything, we cannot be everything to everyone, and so trying to find a way to hone our community, and I think Cass said it well, to convene the community around solutions as opposed to problems, is what this analysis was all about. There was, it started with a primary research effort, and there were three real surveys that were done. Two sort of in traditional survey format, one of the general population. We went out and we surveyed four hundred folks from throughout the community, north, through all areas of the community, geographically diverse, diversity in terms of incomes, ages, all of those type of things, and we asked them, we, the survey was actually some two hundred questions long, although we didn't ask everybody every question. Yes, ma'am?
Was that a phone survey?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The first part was a telephone survey, where we went out and we called everyone to sort of get an idea of what the broad issues were. The second element, which is shown there, is the higher service demand population, was actually done based on an intercept survey. We felt that phones weren't going to be an appropriate way to do that, so the United Way allowed us to actually go out and do four hundred interviews at folks, at Catholic charities, at homeless shelters, at senior centers, boys and girls clubs, those are the types of things, all over the community. We interviewed people that were at or near the federal poverty level. We did those interviews in English and in Spanish that allowed us to really get a feeling. And these were the same questions we were asking the population at large. What we wanted to understand is whether what the community was indicating as the problems that they perceived were the same as the folks that were dealing with those problems, perhaps more acutely, were actually realizing what they were telling us. We found that there were some overlap, we also found that there were some differences. The third portion, so that was four hundred people that were interviewed in person in terms of the higher service demand population, and four hundred folks from the community at large. In addition to that, there were also a number of live interviews that were done. We used live survey technology, where we convened service providers, we convened philanthropists, those type of folks, and asked them all of the same questions and see what they believed. The compilation of all that sort of shown by the Venn diagram is how we ultimately came up with the areas of consensus need. Cass talked about the sort of the three elements that the overall analysis did. These are just sort of summarizing it maybe a little bit of a different way, right? The first element of the survey was a conditional assessment, right? Are you better off today than you were a year ago? Do you expect to be better off? Are your employment options better? Do you have access to health care where you didn't? Have you lost that? Though that was sort of the idea there. The second piece was really this, this global piece, which was, hey, these are all the big problems: education, health care, roads, all of those type of things. We wanted to ask the big questions, because those are the ones that we needed people to kind of tell us what the priorities were. And then the third piece, which is arguably the one that is most important from the analytical work that we did, was the deeper dive. If someone told us that the biggest challenge that they thought the community was having, or they themselves was having, was specific to education, we needed to know, what does that mean, right? Does that mean that you're having a hard time reading, that you're not retrainable relative to getting a new job? Does it mean that you feel like schools are overcrowded, or that you don't have the textbooks that you need? Education means a great many things to a great many people. And so if someone identified education as being one of the top three priorities they thought they had, or one of the three challenges that they felt that the community was dealing with, we asked them to explore that with us in, in some ways excruciating detail. So I guess I should also extend my thanks to all of the people that participated. Again, this is the survey approach and parameters, and perhaps going directly to the question that you asked, Madam Mayor. The first survey was four hundred people that were surveyed via telephone, totally randomly generated. The second one was four hundred people that were interviewed in person, and the third was about two hundred people that were interviewed during a live interview process. So for a total of about a thousand people, which gives us a margin of error of about plus or minus three point one percent at the ninety-five percent confidence interval. What came out of the analysis was really three of the big topics, two of them we combined. A couple of them we probably would have expected, the third one was a bit of a surprise to us as we worked through. Number one was education and employment. And I could spend a lot of time talking through all of the individual elements, I won't do that. But things like reading and mathematics proficiency were particularly important, and what people told us over and over and over again is that I am concerned about my ability to get or keep a job, and I'm concerned about my children's ability to get and keep a job when they come out of the school system. With regard to public safety and crime, one in three, excuse me, three in ten, folks indicated that there was concerns about safety in their neighborhood. At the at-risk population level, that was forty percent of the population, four in ten. Many of those circulated around juvenile issues. My kids don't have enough to do, they're getting themselves in trouble, gangs, drug abuse, those type of things came up and were often included. And finally, there was health care. And with regard to health care, it was about access to health care among the broadest population, and for those that believed they had access to health care, there were acute concerns relative to the quality of health care. Today, of course, in Southern Nevada as a whole, we only have a health care economy about sixty-five percent of the size we should for a community of our size. That was absolutely manifest in many different ways as it relates to health care. Over and over again, respondents indicated to us that they are just one health care emergency away from financial ruin, going to one of the building blocks that Cass alluded to before. Again, I won't go into all of the details there, but in terms of the big three areas of priority, these were them. These sort of show this sort of order of magnitude and how we ranked things. We asked people to rank things from zero, as not important, to ten, kind of most important, and they gave us a lot of information. And what was remarkable is even things that were on our list scored, even things that didn't maybe make it to the top of our list scored relatively high. The community understood what those issues were. I talked about some of these primary issues, I won't go through them again, but I think it's important maybe to begin where we, end where we began, and that is, you know, the idea was to look at the community at large, segment that community, and find out where we have perceived problems, where we have actual problems, and where the gaps are in terms of trying to star, strive to narrow the number of folks that are affected by those problems. So with that, Madam Mayor, again, thank you for the opportunity, and of course, thank you very much to the United Way for allowing me to work on it.
Great work, and I would ask some questions before you conclude. How does one in the public access that? Report, or can't they?
Very easily, twofold. One, if you want a hard copy, we can, you can either ask if we can mail one to you, or you can swing by our offices on Flamingo and get a hard copy. The easy way, uwsn.org.
Would you repeat that, please?
UnitedwayofSouthernNevada.org. UWSN.org stands for United Way of Southern Nevada.org, and it's right online, it's very informative and very easy to use online.
And as well for the tax credit information, in case they missed it during your many announcements over the year.
Same argument. Please either contact uwsn.org, and there's ways to get back in. Our sites are still open for another month, or you can call the office at eight nine two, two three, zero zero, eight nine two, two three, zero zero, and we'd be glad to situate you with a tax preparer.
Thank you, and I'd like to ask the prerogative of the chair one other thing. Jeremy, are these, is there anything startling here that you didn't expect?
I think, Madam Mayor, for the record, Jeremy Aguero, I think the intensity of the concern around education and employment was even more dramatic. I certainly had the expectation that that would be on the top of the list, but, you know, our unemployment rate has dropped dramatically. Folks are feeling better generally about the economy. People are going to work, more visitors are coming back, our population is growing again. And yet, the underlying population remains amazingly concerned about what happens the next time there's a downturn, what happens if I've been unemployed for a long time, and frankly, what happens to my child when so many jobs today require a bachelor's degree and they're not even graduating from high school? The intensity of the concern, when we interviewed people one-on-one, and they, and they, and they told us about how they felt about that, and they, you know, you enter into a conversation sometimes about these things, and it grows. The second one was largely that I think I did not expect, was largely around the question of community safety. The fact that there were some folks that were feeling more concerned than I think we would have expected, that their neighborhoods were places where there were some things going on that they felt were dangerous, were creating a dangerous situation, and were adding, frankly, to some of the other problems that we just alluded to. So if there were two that I was going to point out, I think those would be the two.
And were these, or are these being shared, especially this latter one, because we have that quarter cent tax out there, has this been shared with the legislature?
Yes, we mailed copies and gave presentations to all legislative individuals in play right now. And one other comment on the public safety aspect, it was clear, though, through the survey, there was no issue with the relationship with Metro. Solid relationships, strong, all the rest. It was more the upkeep of the neighborhood, lighting, rundown buildings, da-da-da. Then it got into some of the issues with the kids and with drugs.
And that's very significant, all the municipalities, that they realize that, especially since you did general population as well as most risk. I think it's a great report. And we have some comments, question, Mayor Protem?
I didn't let him finish.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to kind of echo what you said about public safety. That is kind of interesting, and it does concern me that, I mean... That is kind of interesting, and it does concern me that, I mean, we, about 70% of our budget almost goes to public safety. We have federal, state, and local law enforcement, uh, agencies out there, but public safety still comes out number two. You know, almost 40% feel that their, uh, neighborhoods are not safe. Uh, that, that's kind of, that bothers me. You would think that, that would not be the case, but it, it's interesting that, I'm glad you brought that up, Cass. It's not so much, it, it, it sounds like it's more, I mean, the, the ranking of the, of the crimes that they listed was child abuse was number one, and neglect, uh, gangs were number two, home invasions number three, and traffic number four. But what, what you're saying is you also got, kind of got a sense that it was more kind of the broken windows theory type of stuff, where, you know, a window's broken and it's not fixed, or a light is broken and it's not fixed, and th- those aren't major crime issues, but it, it tends to have an impact on whether you think your neighborhood is, um, is, is actually safe or not. And I, the, the home invasion one is interesting because, uh, I don't think we have that many home invasions, so I'm, um, we have burglaries, but there's a difference between a burglary and a home invasion. A home invasion is actually kicking a door in, the family's in there, you go in, you tie 'em up, you, you steal stuff. Uh, so I'm not sure exactly how you frame that particular question, but that, that, the public safety thing, I think we need to work on that.
May I?
Please.
If I may, um, just a couple of things to respond to there. I think indicating the, the ordering of the responses, I think, is very important. And the fact that child abuse and neglect came out so high is something that, that, that you pointed out to, that I think is extremely meaningful. Um, we found that sometimes people were confusing the concept of a home invasion, as you thought about it, with squatters, uh, moving into neighborhoods, going to your idea of, of break, broken window theory, which I think is absolutely dead on. And echoing the sentiment that Cass, uh, offered earlier, I mean, when it came to response times, when it came to the police are there when I need them to be there, or firefighters show up when I dial 911, those were not the concerns that were echoed. Um, the concerns that were echoed, as Cass alluded to, were about, um, frankly, families that were having difficulty taking care of the children that they had, and the outcroppings that were associated from neighborhoods that were in decline.
Okay, that, that's great clarification. The other, just one other comment, I, I found it interesting on page, uh, 37 in your book, um, let me just get there. When, when you asked, uh, generally speaking, how would you rate the quality of life in Southern Nevada? When you asked that to, uh, community leaders, contributors, and stakeholders, about 40% said very good or excellent. And then, but if you go to the general population, uh, how would you rate the quality of Southern Nevada? Uh, 27% said very good or excellent. That's, that's a big difference between what community leaders and stakeholders are seeing the direction of our city and the general population. Do you have a comment on why there's such a difference there?
I mean, the comment would be that people come, see things through their own lens, right? And what means heading in the right direction for you may be very different than what heading in the right direction for me was. Um, you know, we asked those questions to try and gauge, and frankly, to use cross tabulations, for people that felt like things were heading in the right direction, what were their concerns versus how people thought that things were heading in the wrong direction and what their concerns were. Um, I think the point that you bring up is the exact reason why we surveyed three different groups of people, because those viewpoints can be very, very different.
In, in, in my, uh, frame point, remember, uh, three different populations, general, at-risk, and then the leadership aspect, back to the public safety aspect. General and, um, leadership viewed public safety very low, meaning, uh, it was, it was generally safe. It was the at-risk group that, uh, staggered, uh, the numbers because of their, uh, view of, uh, safety issues. You hit it right on head. Three different individuals, they all have, uh, different rose-colored glasses, you know, they got to look at. One other comment on your, uh, public safety, I reviewed this report with the sheriff, and the sheriff had already done his internal analysis, and his analysis was almost as thick of ours on ours, you know, thing, and he went through it to the comb. And he's got some answers for some of the programs, and he's involved in the phase three aspect of this program in terms of, uh, solutions to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ross.
Uh, Mr. Prime Minister, Gary, I just want to say thank you. This is valuable information for any policymaker in this state, certainly in Southern Nevada, and would encourage anyone watching the show today, or, or at home, or here in the audience, to go to your website and take a good look at this. Uh, I didn't realize when my staff handed it to me, I said, "I'm not going to read that." And when they handed it to me, and I actually started going through it, it's valuable information, um, just for us in general. So thank you very much for providing this to me.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if I did cut you off, did you have some other pithy comments there? I'm sorry.
No, other than the opening comments about how our relationship with the city of Las Vegas, our volunteer downtown volunteer program is, uh, going beautifully. Um, conceptually, we're going to have multiple members of the community out there volunteering, reorientating our guests and our visitors back to what downtown is all about. Hey, if you want to go for dining experience, don't go downtown, stay here. Um, issues of that nature. So that program as well. Uh, we have our first cleanup, uh, for the city, uh, June 8th at 8 o'clock. Um, we were expecting several hundred individuals to come out and join the beautification project and go from there.
Um, what, two last questions for step number three. Um, you know me, uh, the process and the solutions, item step three, timeline. When do you expect to get to beginning to deal with that?
End of second quarter this year, um, or beginning of third quarter, somewhere June, July in that time period. Uh, Rob and his team out at, uh, UNLV and Lincie are getting the best practices back to us, they're working on it as we speak. And, yeah, in about two weeks, we're going to be sending letters out to individuals throughout the community to assist on this panel. So several groups are going to be on the panel, uh, this nonprofit CEO group, which you remember, and Chair, Nevada Strong, Southern Nevada Strong, uh, based out of Henderson, their group, um, is doing similar work and should be on this panel. Um, and then our Healthy Communities Coalition, um, similar concepts will be on the panel. And then citizens at large will be asked to join the panel too.
And is there any way to go back through applied, um, analysis system to let the people that you've contacted know we are now at here step two and here's step three? Or no?
Relative to the surveys, Madam Mayor, the answer to that question's going to be no. And that's because we, we assured anonymity, uh, relative to everyone that we interviewed. So we promised them that they would not be contacted again, or that their names wouldn't be associated with any of the information that we gave them, so we need to follow through on that.
So how does that, um, how is that made public? So people who do want to know and have been, uh, part of that anonymous survey, find out?
I'll put public notice in the RJ.
Okay. Oh, excellent.
I'll put an ad out there.
And it'll also be on your website?
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
Well, I think it's just great and a wonderful report, and just keep going, it's fabulous. Native-born, native-educated, just great job, we're so proud of you, you're everywhere, this man does not sleep. But you have done a fabulous job, we're so proud.
Forty years, two degrees, UNLV, da-da-da-da.
You know, it's wonderful. Native, native, go Vegas, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number 40, report regarding an update and overview of operations and activities of Big League of Dreams located 3151 East Washington Avenue, presented by Ed Farmer, General Manager, and Councilman Kaufman's Ward 3, you lucky man. And, good morning.
Good morning, Your Honor. Lonnie Zimmerman Parks Recreation and Deputy Director for Neighborhood Services. I just wanted to introduce Ed Farmer, who is now the Regional Manager, as well as the Local General Manager of Big League Dreams Las Vegas.
Wonderful, please come forward.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, Council, Staff, um, my name is Ed Farmer, I'm the Regional Director, and also the General Manager of the Big League Dreams Sports Park located in Gary Rees Freedom Park, and also are your, uh, partner, yeah, in that particular project. So thank you for allowing me to come to you today. I wanted to just give you a brief update on how things have been going since we opened in 2010, uh, and hit a few highlights of what's been happening out at, uh, out of our facility. 2012 was really a good year for us. We've grown every year since we've opened. We are hosting, uh, last year, more than 1,700, uh, softball league teams over the course of about four seasons, over 400 teams every particular season, uh, as well as additionally over 75 indoor, uh, soccer teams. Uh, we make our facility, uh, available to youth organizations for practices, uh, as time permits. We've hosted a lot of youth tournaments on weekends, which brings in a lot of, uh, out-of-state visitors, which helps obviously in the economic, uh, portion of, of the city of Las Vegas. Um, Big League Dreams is certainly quickly becoming a destination place for tournament play, for both adult and youth play. Um, we've just recently met with, uh, uh, staff members, Lonnie Zimmerman and his staff, along with Tom Funstein for USSA softball. Uh, we're proud to announce we've been awarded a men's slope pit softball tournament this year in September, which will be utilizing Big League Dreams Sports Park, uh, from a Thursday through a Sunday, in addition to Lorenzi Park, which we are now in the process of trying to make sure that we are utilizing that facility as well. So, uh, both, uh, Councilman Kaufman and Kauf, uh, Councilman Barlow will be kept abreast of that particular tournament, but it is a very, very large tournament, uh, the biggest one on the West Coast every year, and that will be held here in Vegas this year in, in 2013. In addition to that, we've also, uh, been a very integral part of recently, this past year, uh, helping with Las Vegas events and securing the Senior Softball World Series in October, which is a two-week-long event, which again brings, uh, quite a few visitors to Las Vegas that were never there before. We actually, uh, took that particular tournament away from the Phoenix, Arizona area. So again, we're real proud to be, be the host facility of that, uh, particular event, as well as other facilities throughout the, uh, the community here. We certainly work with, uh, nonprofit organizations, we've worked with after-school All-Stars, uh, we hold a couple tournaments a year where we give back canned food and do food drives for, uh, Three Square and help of Southern Nevada. So we're very community-oriented and want to make sure that everybody understands that we're not just a business, uh, we are part of the community, and, and certainly want to make sure that we have a good rapport with everybody, and we feel that we've done a really good job of doing that. I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about thanking, uh, Lonnie Zimmerman and the city staff. Uh, we have a very, very good working relationship. Anytime there is any issues on our side or on their side, we get together and we solve the issues very, very quickly and very, very proficiently. So, um, again, very, very brief, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands we value the partnership, we value the foreside of, of the city of Las Vegas being our partners, and creating such a great atmosphere with Big League Dreams, and also all the renovations to Freedom Park. It's really refreshing to be able to go to the park and see the amount of, of visitors and, and the amount of, uh, people that are walking through the park on an everyday basis that weren't always there prior to this renovation. So thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to, to comment.
Thank you, thank you. A great report, great facility, just a wonderful place to go, it's wonderful. Councilman Ross.
Thank you for your report. Mr. Farmer, Mr. Farmer, do you have any economic numbers tied to all of those weeks of league attendance in the city of Las Vegas? Have you done any kind of analysis like?
We have not done a, a particular analysis on that. Uh, we are obligated through our management agreement to, to provide P&L reports, which we've done, uh, and shows, uh, just an overall economic picture of, of how our facility is doing, uh, but we have not done anything, and we'd be happy to work with somebody, especially on staff, to, to really do that. But, you know, with, with, again, as many tournaments are coming in from out, out of state, especially some of these larger tournaments, uh, our October is completely booked with out-of-state visitors.
And, and that, I, I'm, I'm not that concerned about the P&L statement, as I really like to know.
Agreed.
The economic impacts of what you guys are doing to the city of Las Vegas. And, and, uh, Mr. Zimmerman, I don't know if that's something that we can get from, out of your office, or do we need to engage the LVCVA in this process, or what do you think?
Uh, to be specific to your question, Councilman, is, it's something that we've been looking at, not only with Big League Dreams, but all of the use of all of our wonderful facilities and the amount of impact that's coming here. Jeremy Aguero, who just previously spoke, has helped us with that a little bit, as long as we're working with ISO Consulting about policies and a general look at revenue enhancements. And that typically scares people, but one of the things we're looking at is not so much the, the, we are, we are looking at what it costs people to use our facilities, but should our rental fees be offset by if somebody's going to bring us an $8 million economic impact to the valley? Should that, should we look at that offset? So to answer your question without getting too long-winded, is we're beginning to look at that, and we're looking at it in two different ways, because we believe that, that's a broader question than just Big League Dreams and the thousand teams they might bring, but all of our 133 fields and what economic impacts are yielded through those use on a consistent basis.
Thank you, and, and Mayor, if I may continue.
Please.
I think it's significant and important that we recognize, as certainly as Las Vegas leadership, as a mayor and council, the economic impact of Big, of, of Big League Dreams, because it's huge. And I would really like to know how that dollar is spent in our community. Are they filling up our hotels? Are they, you know, are they eating at our restaurants? Are they, are they helping this, the businesses? Because it's huge, and, and I'd actually like to see that. So you guys put your thinking caps on and see if you can come up with something for us.
We'll be happy to cooperate and, and make sure we get something to you, for sure, right? We, we feel strongly as well, Councilman, that, that we are really adding to that, that economic impact, for sure.
Well, likewise, Mayor, if I can say, also say, this information needs to be brought to the LVCVA, so they have an understanding of how significant this is, and what's going on, uh, with Big League Dreams, Mayor. So I thought, I just want to kind of plant that seed and see where it goes. Thank you.
Well, and it spreads the word, and I would add for those in the viewing public that Councilman Steve Ross does sit on the board at the LVCVA. So it's important, and he knows what's going on there, and they need to have the information. Good point, good point.
Agreed. We'd love to provide that, because we feel it's going to cer- certainly be positive.
Great, thank you. Anyone else, questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. And we will move on to item number 41. This is a report regarding the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code is adopted by the city of Las Vegas on April 6th, 2011, and it's in regard to all wards. And so, good morning still.
Good morning, Mayor, uh, members of the council. Chris Knight, City of Las Vegas Building and Safety Director. Uh, in your backup, there is a white paper that we provided to you. We've also provided, uh, uh, some, um, corrections to that. We corrected on page five, the cost of the 2000 code for Nevada. Uh, it was presented originally, it could be interpreted as being cost related to the 2012 code. We also changed page nine, comparison, uh, applies to the range, lead you to believe that, uh, there were 1,800 tenant improvements in our downtown, there weren't, there were 1,800 since we adopted 2009 code citywide. Then it referenced the number of, of, uh, projects downtown, we've changed that to reference a citywide, uh, number as well. Uh, there are, so, for the record, I've placed, uh, the updated copies on, on the DAS, on the site over here for any of the members of the public that are wishing to get those updated reports. This presentation that we're about to give you is basically from that white paper, and there, as you saw at the beginning of the meeting, there may be several people that wish to, uh, make comment on this item, uh, from the audi- audience. Uh, City of Las Vegas International Con- uh, Conservation Code, International Energy Conservation Code Discussion, uh, we would begin with that with the involvement of the United States Department of Energy in the code development process. Uh, the, uh, in 1998, the DOE became more directly involved in energy, uh, code development and commissioned the International Code Council, uh, to use its consensus code development process to develop an energy code to be used throughout the United States and around the world. The first edition of a consensus-driven International Energy Conservation Code was published in the year 2000. Between the 2006 and 2009, uh, International Energy Conservation Code Development, the DOE set a goal for the International Code Council, who publishes these codes, to develop a consensus code that would increase energy efficiency in residential and commercial buildings of 12% for the 2009 code, 18% for the 2012 code, with a goal of obtaining a 30 perci- 30% increase in energy, uh, in our, in the built environment by the year 2020. The DOE also, also set a longer-term goal of achieving a net zero energy usage for all new construction by the year 2030. These challenges from the DOE, uh, to the International Code Council, uh, came with a commitment by the DOE, uh, that they would, if these goals were not met, they would develop a federal energy code that does meet these, uh, these goals, that would be applied to states and local units of government across the nation. Uh, the state of Nevada, uh, involvement in the development and the, uh, adoption and, and enforcement of the International Energy Code. Energy Code. The state of Nevada initially created the Office of Energy in the 1970s. That was in response to the 1974 national energy crisis. The Office of Energy has undergone a lot of, several reorganizations, and in 2001, the Energy Office was placed in the governor's office, which is its current location, and is responsible for the state energy program. The program sets standards for energy conservation and offers various programs for financial incentives for energy initiatives, including compliance with the IECC. The interesting thing about the Nevada Energy, Nevada Office of Energy is Nevada Revised Statute 701.220 requires the director of the Office of Energy to adopt standards for energy consumption, including a requirement of the director to adopt the most recent version of the International Energy Conservation Code published by ICC. It also authorizes the director to make any amendments to that code, provided those amendments will not materially lessen any energy savings requirements of the IECC. Further, NRS 701.220 also requires that any local governments authorized to adopt and enforce building codes in the state to incorporate the standards adopted by the director in its building code. This would include the most recent version of IECC. LCB File Number RO24-11, Section 6, Paragraph 1, adopted as part of the standards adopted by the director of the Office of Energy into the Nevada Administrative Codes allows local governments to submit a petition to the director requesting approval for a deviation from one or more of the standards set forth in the IECC. However, the petition must include an explanation of how the deviation will not lessen the effective energy efficiency requirements of the IECC. These provisions also allow an owner of a building, a private owner, to make the same petition to the local unit of government. If they do not get satisfaction at the local unit of government, to make that petition to the state Office of Energy, including with those requests, how the deviation will not lessen the efficiency. And then finally, the Nevada Revised Statute 278.581 requires the governing body of any city and a county whose population 100,000 or more to adopt an energy code as a part of its building codes. So you have a state requirement that says you have to have an energy code, then you have a state of Office of Energy that says that, that, that energy code has to be the IECC. City of Las Vegas involvement. The city of Las Vegas adopted the Model Energy Code, which was created in, in response, again, to the 1974 national energy crisis to create greater energy efficiencies and occupant comfort levels for residential and commercial buildings. The city adopted the 1992 Model Energy Code in April of 1995 and enforced its provisions up until 2005, when in 2000, in May of 2005, the city adopted the 2003 International Energy Conservation Code. In keeping with the three-year code cycle, the city has continued to adopt the 2006 Energy Conservation Code in January 2007, and the 2009 Energy Conservation Code in April 2011, with an effective date of July 5, 2011. So anything that we talk about under the 2000 code has been in enforcement since July 5, 2011. The city of Las Vegas is a recognized leader in sustainability and energy conservation. Sustainability is one of the three leading initiatives adopted by the city council. The city devotes over a third of its official website to its accomplishments in reducing carbon emissions, which is one of the major benefits derived from the adoption and implementation of the International Energy Conservation Code for residential and commercial buildings. The city has spent considerable time and effort and funding in the use of alternative energy sources. Recycling, encouraging green space development, and converting its fleet of vehicles to energy-efficient vehicles, including electric cars, flex fuel vehicles, and hybrids. It only makes sense that the adoption enforcement of a national standard for energy conservation in buildings throughout the United States and around the world would be a part of sustainability and energy efficiency in the city of Las Vegas. A recent article dated April 3, 2013, in Sustainable City Network, a national magazine quoted the city's sustainability officer as being confident that if the city stays its current course, it will be one of the first net-zero cities in the United States, and taking great pride in, in that accomplishment. So you've heard a lot about the International Code Council. What is the International Code Council, and what is this adoption process that you keep hearing about that is a consensus adoption process? The International Code Council was created in 1994 as a nonprofit organization dedicated to developing a single set of individual, of national model codes without regard to regional limitations. There were three regional model codes in existence at that time, one published by the Building Officials and Code Administrations, Administrators International, known as BOKA, International Code Conference of Building Officials, known as the ICBO, and the Southern Building Code Conference International, the SBCCI. They took those codes, developed a single code in building code, commercial building codes, residential codes, plumbing codes, mechanical codes, any number of codes. The ICC today publishes 15 comprehensive and coordinated international codes, including the International Building Code, Residential Code, Existing Building Code, Fire Code, Energy Conservation Code, and Swimming Pool Codes, all of which are adopted today in each of the jurisdictions in southern Nevada, with the exception, as Councilman Beers has pointed out to me many times, the city of Mesquite did not adopt the International Energy Conservation Code. Each amendment in this process is presented, while the ICC publishes new code versions on a three-year code cycle, during the intervening three years, any interested group or individual, any one of you as an individual, may come to the ICC and propose an amendment to the various codes that they publish. It is a very open process. If you have any interest in the sale, construction, maintenance, elements of a building in our nation, those interests are represented in this consensus process of ICC. There are literally thousands of hearings and meetings that occur to review all of the different code amendments and all of the different codes. It is probably, as I have watched it in the five years I've been your building official, the most democratic process I've ever seen in my life, and it is incredibly open and collaborative. Each amendment's presented in an open debate and to participation with a committee of representatives across the construction industry, including code regulators, construction industry representatives. No increase in the standards or amendments are approved until the full three-year process is complete at the annual business meeting of the ICC, where each individual member present is provided a vote on the amendments, and there are a lot of them. And it typically takes a two-thirds vote of those members present to pass any amendment. So there's a stringent requirement, you don't just willy-nilly get it through the code. How the international code works? There are three methods. The IECC provides three different options that the building designers may use to meet the requirements of the code. There is the prescriptive method, which prescribes how buildings are to be constructed to meet the IECC. It is the easiest and most commonly or widely-used method. The simulated performance method uses software developed to determine a simulated code compliance to all the requirements of the prescriptive method. And then the, the third method is the whole building analysis, uses software that takes the entire building and performs a whole building analysis that will analyze annual total energy use. New home construction in southern Nevada is required to meet the full requirements of the International Energy Conservation Code, along with other applicable codes like the International Residential Code. However, recent data released by the Southern Nevada Building Officials says that 64% of the homes built between 2009 and 2011 were designed and constructed as Energy Star Homes. An Energy Star Home meets a criteria that is 15% above the standard of the base International Energy Conservation Code. Of those homes that were built as Energy Star Homes, 30% of those homes qualified for Energy Star were not 15% above the IECC, they were 30% above the IECC requirements. This above-code provision is not mandated by the building department or anybody, it is market-driven. It is something that the, each of the developers of single-family homes use as a marketing tool to, to sell their homes, and it's incorporated into the design of their homes today. Typically, these requirements are met with the initial design of a new building by a licensed design professional, are accosted, and planned for as part of an entire project. Any commercial building that is brand-new would also have to meet, that is, a turnkey project from the ground up, would have to meet the designs or the requirements of the International Energy Conservation Code. However, when an addition is proposed, well, it's back to the residence, when additions proposed to a residence, only that addition meets the IECC. You don't take that addition, if it's a bedroom addition, and apply all of the IECC to the entire, which means then that the building envelope, the walls, and the windows, and those things would have to meet the requirements of the IECC. If remodeling a house, you, whatever you're remodeling would have to meet the, the IECC standards. However, if the remodel is entirely an interior and you're not touching the building envelope, the exterior walls, ceiling, or floors, you'll have no requirements under the IECC which to meet. Under commercial, where tenant improvements are to be made to an existing commercial building, again, only those items being altered or installed that are regulated by the IECC need to comply with the code. So if your tenant improvement is being made to an existing building or tenant space that does not have heating, ventilating, or air conditioning equipment, or the work involves installation of such new equipment, the entire tenant space must be brought into compliance with the ICC. That is the crux of the, the issue at hand today, is the upfront costs associated with complying with the IECC, and those projects that may be marginally, thank you, marginally capitalized, to have the initial capital outlay makes doing business very difficult, and I'll address that some more as I go forward. If a new tenant is moving, if a new tenant is adding to an existing building, only, again, is the new addition required to meet the IECC requirements. If the proposed use by a new tenant or owner of a building results in a change of use, and this is an issue we run into real regular, or occupancy that is required to meet building code requirements for a more hazardous use, or would result in an increase in demand for either fossil fuel or electrical energy, then the requirements of the IECC will be required to be met. If work required or desired to be performed does not alter the existing building envelope, however, again, there are no ICC requirements to be met. The change of, of use to a more hazardous use, so you can understand how building officials think, which took me a while to figure out, a, a change of use to a more hazardous use would be an example of a warehouse that is not built for occupancy, may not even be heating or heated or cooled, and they want to take that warehouse and say, put an office complex, offices, or even a church. We've had a situation where a warehouse was wanting to be converted to a church, and the warehouse was not heated or cooled, they had to meet the requirements of the IECC, which was a cost they clearly did not intend, and everybody knows churches don't have any money. So that's, that's part of the issue here. Okay? If the proposed building, the space, does not have conditioned air and is being changed to a use that requires conditioned air, then they have to meet with the IECC. It's been an issue in our downtown with masonry block buildings. That's been a biggie, and other areas of conversion of unconditional warehouse space, such as I mentioned. It should be noted that approximately 1,800 tenant improvement permits have been issued under the 2009 IECC. Of those 1,800 tenant improvement permits, 18 have had to meet the full requirements of the IECC. What has driven this issue is 1% of the permits and the projects that we have permitted and, and developed. Two of those projects were in our downtown. If, finally, if a building envelope does not comply with the IECC using prescriptive tools, you can use the ResNet, which is the software, or the ComCheck software to meet it, and the beauty of what those do is it allows you to take your building envelope elements and add, for instance, more insulation into the roof, less insulation on the walls, and do the calculations to meet the energy efficiency requirements of the IECC using trade-offs, and using what you can, what materials you can get, less expensive or more expensive, and then find a formula that works for you, that lets you meet the requirements of the IECC. And that's how it works. The next thing is the cost of IECC compliance, because that's one of the central issues. An analysis of the cost of complying with the 2009 IECC for homes constructed in Nevada was conducted by Building Codes Assistance Project. The analysis determined that the cost increase for complying with the 2009 IECC averaged $777 in Nevada, an increase of 3/10 of a percent over the 2006 IECC. There was a formula in there, and it's, it's described in your white paper that I'm not going to get into, that does mortgages and taxes, and you'll see one for the city of Mesa here in a minute. But in terms of a simple payback, and I like things simple, the increase of $777 in construction is offset by the estimated annual energy savings of $228.48. That comes from a monthly savings of $19.04, resulting in a simple payback of 3.4 years for any, for a single-family home under the 2009 IECC. Currently, there's not any published data for what the 2012 IECC would, would do in terms of payback. STAFF was also able to locate three separate studies in Utah, Texas, and South Carolina concerning cost impacts of the 2012 code. The significance of these three states is that they are in the same climatic zone by code as Nevada, Zone 3. Therefore, the requirements are virtually the same, except South Carolina naturally has more humidity. The chart above shows additional costs, additional costs of four of 1,100 to 2,200 in the construction costs, a payback of average of 6.3 years, and energy cost savings of around $340 a year. So there is payback on it. For residential compliance, further residential, these tables were taken from a study conducted by the, for the Department of Energy by the Northwest National Laboratory operated by Batel in, in the city of Mesa, Arizona. Mesa, Arizona is in Class 2B, Environmental Group 2B. They're a little hotter than Las Vegas for a longer period of time. The study was done in March of 2011 and showed the energy cost impacts for a single-family home. The study model was a two-story, single-family home with a conditioned floor area of 2,400 square feet with a slab-on-grade foundation, not unlike any other home in Las Vegas. Table 4 shows the annual, annual energy cost savings between the 2006, 2009 IECC, and Table 5 shows the costs between the 2003 and 2009. You will see that the total savings 2009 between the 2009 and 2006 is $125 savings a year. The savings between the 2003 and the 2009 is 145. As the requirements of these codes get, create more energy efficiency, the farther away the house was built, the more you get in, in, in benefit under the new code. From the same study in Mesa, Arizona, Arizona, I sound like I just got out of the coal mine. From the same study from Mesa, Arizona, Table 6 shows the impacts to consumers' cash flow resulting from the improvement in the 2009 IECC. The upfront costs include the down payment and loan fees, the saving from income tax deduction from the mortgage interest will slowly decrease over time. The annual values shown in the table are for the first year. Table 6 also includes increases in annual property taxes because of higher taxes, higher assessed values. The annual cash flow includes energy costs, mortgage, mortgage payments, mortgage tax deductions, and property taxes, but not the upfront costs. The time to positive cash flow is under four years for the improvements in the 2009 IECC and compared to the 2003, and two years for the 2006 IECC comparison. Basically, the requirements increase the payback periods by 50% through each code update, or decrease it, I'm sorry. That's a table Councilman Beers may be interested in, that I honestly had trouble understanding, so I hope you do. Okay? And finding information on commercial developments is even more difficult, okay? And more challenging because of the myriad variations in size, use, shape, and construction. However, in February, again, the Batel Laboratory did an analysis of an apartment building, mid-rise apartment building, small retail building, and an industrial intent, and an industrial office warehouse building in Mesa, Arizona. The EUI designation on there that you're looking at is the energy use intensity. That is basically what its name says. Imploys how intense or how much energy does the building require for heating or cooling. The ASHRAE standards that you see compared there are standards that were developed by the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, specific to their industry. It's specific to, it doesn't look at building envelope, it's specific to the heating and cooling systems. According to the study, multifamily buildings built to the 2009 IECC standard would use approximately 30% less energy and save approximately 30% in energy costs compared to the 2003 IECC. All non-residential buildings built to the 2009 code All non-residential buildings built to the 2009 code save between 10% and 25% energy on their energy use and their energy costs, and you can also see the energy savings and costs between the 2006 and 2009 codes. Again, those tables, we, we have the studies, we can provide them to you, or copies of this presentation. The last item on the cost of I E C C compliance is, is the construction costs. One of the things that is, what does it do to the impact of the building envelope? The single biggest impact of the building envelope typically is insulation of the walls. We looked for information on insulation of the walls, and especially in older masonry buildings, and we found a study done in New York City, which seems to have been the, the insulation of the masonry walls is at the center of our, of our conversation today. The, we found in June 2012, the U.S. Department of Energy published a study on the cost of installing insulation of the walls of an existing brick building. The table above shows the costs of providing insulation on a multifamily building of 7,600 square feet in area, with eight apartments of approximately 960 square feet each located in Climate Zone 4 in New York City, New York. Climate Zone 4 means it gets colder and it gets hotter, and they have a more varied environment than ours. Ours is just kind of mostly hot. The total wall area to be covered was calculated to be 8,672 square feet. As you can see by the table, the average cost per, per square foot for the three different products is between $1.28, $1.69 a square foot. The simple payback would be between five and seven years. You will find in residential and commercial, there are energy cost savings of between 10% and 30%. You will find on average, payback periods to be anywhere from two to seven years, depending upon your application.
Councilman Beers, please go ahead. You had a question?
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Thank you. So I'm, I'm looking for, I guess I divided the installed cost for modeled building into the cost per square foot for each, for one of the rows, and it looks like their model building is about 8,500 square feet, I think.
I think we said 8,672.
Okay. So we both are, you know, the incidences that have kicked us down this path are about a 2,000-square-foot building that had to spend in excess of $30,000 in downtown Las Vegas to insulate its walls. That is considerably out of sync with the data that's being presented here.
We haven't seen the actual figures on the case that you're talking about, we're only taking the individual's word at it, I don't know.
Right, but we made him do, we made him do what he did, and so we can figure out how much it costs, but I, I'm just, there seems to be a pretty significant disconnect in this, in this data with what we've experienced in Las Vegas.
And again, that's the difficulty we have, we don't have any real data. That's one of the things we'll be looking for down the road, is to try and get some more real data, perhaps get the-
I'm sorry to interrupt, Chris, thank you.
Get other people to do that, okay? The financial assistance, the whole idea is the upfront cost and how much it costs to meet the requirements. The city, through the Quick Start program administered by the Department of Economic and Urban Development, provides financial assistance in the form of grants. You know about the Quick Start program, up to $50,000. The grants are based upon specific funding priorities. One of those priorities, the number two priority, is projects for which the existing building or site improvements are substantially dilapidated and/or non-conforming to present city codes and standards, and that the I E C C is one of our codes, it's eligible for Quick Start program.
But the funds at this time are somewhat limited, correct? It's not like it's open-ended funding for everybody who wants to know.
It's not open-ended funding for everybody, it's only in the redevelopment areas 1 and 2. The Energy Office of the state of Nevada received a three-year, $5 million grant from the Department of Energy in 2010 for the Energy Fit program, which I believe this council has done a presentation on with the Director of the Office of Energy. It's a program aimed at increasing comfort and energy savings in Nevada homes while reducing energy consumption, and that's for single-family homes. If anyone's watching and goes, oh, well, I'd like to do that for my single-family home, a little plug, they can go to energiefitnevada.org and sign up for the program and see what that's all about. Here's an interesting one, the United States Internal Revenue Service. Subsection 179D allows commercial business owners to receive a federal tax deduction, commonly known as E-PACT, resulting in a tax deduction of up to $1.80 per square foot for qualifying energy efficiency measures installed in commercial buildings. So if you're watching and you own a commercial building or a business, talk to your tax accountant, because that deduction is there. Nevada Energy and Southwest Gas, both-
Thank you, may I ask, thank you, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
So, and what you're saying is that's better than just simply capitalizing the cost into your building and then depreciating over a period of time? You get a, you get an immediate write-off?
You can get an immediate write-off.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you, Your Honor.
Nevada Energy and Southwest Gas have various utility rebate programs for both residential and commercial projects. All of these programs are rebates, are after the initial expenditure that a business has to make to get into business, and that is one of the, the issues here. The largest concern is with the code requirements is for under-capitalized projects. Concern has been the I E C C is driving business out of the downtown and the city of Las Vegas to surrounding communities. However, in defense of the I E C C, the I E C C is also adopted in other surrounding communities. If you have the exact same building in Las Vegas that you have in Henderson, you will find the exact same issues in Henderson, or the same issues in Clark County. The problem is, is with the age of some of our buildings in our downtown, and the length of time that they have been there, whether or not they're air-conditioned or anything else, and that is, creates a problem for us. It is that length of time, because as you go farther out, and you go to some other, some of the other communities, their buildings aren't as old as ours, they already have conditioned air, and though so, the I E C C is not as difficult to meet. So we do have a challenge in our downtown, there's no question about that. And I will be proposing something, but I would remind you of the case that we're only talking about 1% of the projects that we've dealt with since July of 2011.
But that was, that's why Quick Start, in part, was established, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
To take care of that.
That was.
I think Councilman Ross wanted to ask you a question and make a comment.
Certainly.
Thank you, Mayor, and through you, of course, to Mr. Knight, and that's the, this is the perfect time to ask this question. Mr. Knight, how many buildings are we really talking about?
I, I-
There's 8,100 permits and it was 30 cases.
Yeah. I, I, off the top of my head, Councilman, I honestly don't know.
Okay, but back to your 1% of your building-
It's 1% of the buildings. We've done 1,800 projects. There may be multiple tenant improvements in, in a single building, so I don't know how many buildings we're talking about. But it's, it's based on the number of projects, and I think that one of the things, if you remember, the state of Nevada at one time required that the building departments in each of the jurisdictions map the non-reinforced masonry block buildings for seismic purposes, and that map is available online in the city. If you look at that map, you could probably get a pretty good idea on the masonry block buildings.
Through the mayor, again, to you, Mr. Knight, why didn't Mesquite not adopt the code? Do you know the reasons why?
I don't know why they didn't adopt the energy code, and I don't know what's going to happen to them. Emily Nunez from the State Office of Energy is here, and I've talked to her, and I've asked her that this question may come up, and she may need to be prepared to, to respond to it. I have no idea what's going to happen to them, what will or won't happen to them.
As far as penalty, is there any development, redevelopment going on in Mesquite? And when did they opt out? Do you know the data that-
They did not adopt the 2009 code. I don't know if they did-
So there should be data already, but nothing's been affected. Councilman Beers?
I, I believe that they did adopt it, and they instructed their city attorney at the time to investigate what the penalties were for not adopting it.
Councilman's correct.
The attorney reported back after a week's time that there was no apparent penalty, so they then unadopted it. But that was shortly after this all came to force, so I guess it would have been three, four years ago. And to your first question, you'll recall the discussions that we've had about the adjustments to the C-Tax formula that took place at the very start of this current legislative session. All those adjustments were, in fact, about the fact that only one jurisdiction in Clark County posted growth, therefore, they were going to get all of the growth component of the C-Tax formula that that community was, Mesquite.
Councilman Coffin?
I think we'll get to the end of this, I'm sure, Your Honor, because this, this report is, is an excellent report, and I think the timing is important, and maybe by accident, it's in anticipation of a bill to be introduced here today-
Yes.
-relating to that. I'm sure that's just coincidental, but on the other hand, it's going to be useful, because we're going to hear all this again, Your Honor, when we have our debate on the energy code bill. So, you know, it's like, we can hear it now or hear it later. I suppose hearing it now is good, then we'll hear it again, and repetition will make it more memorable. I think that just in some, for me, I, I realize most of these buildings are in Ward 3, they are downtown, and Ward 5 and Ward 4 have some too. Buildings, you know, 80 to 100 years old, a lot of them, and a lot of them newer, but not conforming. I'm a great believer in the climate bill, in that program for 2030, I think it's critical for us. I think that where we've run into some problems is, and this is a money deal for us as a city now, it's not just for the under-capitalized business proprietor, who wants to come in. I'm more informed now, after having a meeting with some Green Building Council people yesterday and some architects, but there is still this nagging question, why do we spend so much money adopting code, which we then force others to adopt in their construction? And then we subsidize the cost of the, the additional cost of the reconstruction, if you will, the repurposing, through our QSP program, which is brand-new, and maybe some of the V I P, but you see, we're taking taxpayer money from the redevelopment area and helping, directly helping somebody in the redevelopment area, but it's really kind of like it's mandated expense that we are going to pay for. And so I think I'm beginning to grasp the idea of the envelope being the key, that every, there's lots of elements that can help people meet the code.
Yes, sir.
And there's been a lot of talk about, you know, the cost getting to it, and maybe it's misguidance, or frankly, malpractice by contractors and some perhaps uninformed architects about guidance to the, to the new person, and they get it started in one direction, and it still doesn't meet code because, you know, it's, it's just not there for whatever reason in the scorecard, but then there's this, this horrible amount of money already spent, so now you've got to spend more money to get there. So, I know we're going to get to the answer on this, but I think that, I wanted to put some perspective on the, in the context anyway, on the reason why you're here today, to help us understand this, so that we don't willy-nilly make some change without knowing what we're doing. I think that's, that would be irresponsible. But certainly, there might be some changes needed if we, after hearing it, you know? And I know the mayor's going to want to hear it, and we're going to have to refer it over to recommending the bill I'm talking about.
I know you're not complete with the report, thank you, Councilman, and it's really informative. I'm wondering if in any jurisdiction there is latitude given to building directors to-
Yes, ma'am. The building code, unlike city codes, and we're addressing issues in city code on the civil side in my department, the building code gives latitude to the building officials to make determinations. One of the things in the building code that is given to the building official is occupancy determination, the occupant loads. The building code, the I B C itself, talks about at 100 occupant load, everything changes. But it all, there's also a provision in there that says the, the building official may establish that occupant load as they deem practical. In other words, there's nothing scientific about a 100 occupant load, that the air changes, the space changes, when you put that 101st person in there. So they realize that there are circumstances where you may want to have some latitude and leeway for your building official to make a practical determination. I do that on a regular basis, we document those decisions, put them in the record, say these are the factors that played in that decision, and we move forward with that. All of the building codes have that latitude already built into them, as well as the I E C C.
Unrestrictedly or specific to-
No, ma'am, not unrestrictedly, because you clearly cannot waive the provisions of the code, and we've, we've talked to people about that, and that's, I know this presentation seems like it has the half-life of plutonium, but I am finished about, and I am almost finished. But that's one of the issues that I will be recommending here on my last slide.
Okay. Any other comments as we go forward? This is a great report, I mean, and are those, when you make those judgments, are those a matter of public record? I would assume they are.
Yes, ma'am, always.
Okay, so anybody else who has a similar situation could go back into public record and say, boy, I fit in this same area.
We are watched constantly, you did it for them, do it for me.
We know that big brother is always watching. Thank you, please continue.
Okay, the last slide I have are some public policy questions that we posed in, in the white paper. Do the increased costs, energy consumption reduction, energy cost savings, and simple payback periods of complying with the latest edition of the I E C C as discussed warrant continuation of the practice of the adoption of the, of the code by the city of Las Vegas or adoption of further amendments to the code? The same thing applies in the second one in relation to our downtown redevelopment areas. Is it, is it practical to continue, is it warranted to continue with, with the I E C C in our downtown? And the third one is, do the increased costs of compliance with I E C C warrant increasing, Councilman Coffin, the Quick Start program grants for other buildings located in the, older buildings located in the downtown redevelopment in which new heating, ventilating, or cooling equipment is to be installed? Clearly, we do adopt those regulations, clearly we do, they are, they do have an upfront cost to them, and clearly, if it's government chooses to so do, this council chooses to do so, may offset those costs.
But as you stated to my question, the Quick Start program at this point has limited funding.
Yes, it does.
So that's a variable right there.
You would have to probably fund it more.
Councilman Beers?
Perhaps you or Councilman Coffin, who have much better memories than I, can refresh mine, but my recollection was that we started Quick Start in response to our recognition that we were imposing some pretty stiff costs on people for hooking up to the sewers, and that was, we didn't even know about the impact of the implementation of the energy code at that time, was my recollection.
And then the last policy question, which is kind of difficult for me to present, but it's my job to do, should the city of Las Vegas disregard the statutory prohibition against adopting energy efficiency standards that are less restrictive than those adopted by the State Office of Energy by amending the I E C C to provide less restrictive energy regulations for businesses located in the downtown redevelopment area? So that's, that's a question. I am aware of the, the bill that's on for introduction today, and that will be a question that, that the council will have to answer, not me. I do have two recommendations for you from a staff standpoint. I am your building official. You do look at me and say, well, what do you think? And every once in a while, I actually tell you what I think. As the building official, I think the International Energy Conservation Code is a good code and should be kept intact. I think it is, it, in the long run, moves the city forward in its sustainability initiative, in the long run becomes a benefit to private businesses. Yes, we have to do something about those initial costs, and that's part of my recommendation is for the council's direct staff to use the procedures outlined in the Nevada Administrative Code, remember the appeal process for amendments? Nevada Administrative Code to work with the State Department of Energy to develop a program, standard, or method to address the front-end cost and/or adaptive reuse of older building stock in the city without conditioned air to receive greater efficiencies in energy without full immediate compliance to the requirements of the most recent adopted version of the I E C C, not to preclude a phased approach for full compliance of these types of projects. The second recommendation we have to you is further direct staff to develop a training course on the I E C C requirements for older buildings, and those without conditioned air to be presented to the design professional, contracting, and business owner communities doing, conducting business with the city of Las Vegas Building Department to aid in their understanding of the requirements of the code. We will prepare a training course, bring people in, in the Quick Start program, as E U D is talking to folks, we can bring them in and educate them upfront, so that these costs and these issues are not a surprise to them. them upfront, so that these costs and these issues are not a surprise to them. So, that's the end of my report. Be happy to answer any further questions you have. Thank you for your patience with me.
Thank you, lengthy, and I'm glad you're still standing. I was debating, should we have you have a chair pulled over? But thank you, it's wonderful. And council questions here? Yes, Councilman Beers.
I'll just throw a couple of comments out. In the interest of transparency, I think the council needs to understand that a grand total of zero of the eighteen officers and board members of the International Code Council live outside the United States. So, the use of the word "international" is, in fact, not transparent. I don't know what that means on everything, but using the numbers that you presented, Chris, doing some quick back-of-the-cocktail-napkin math, we're looking at paybacks in excess of a hundred years on these old downtown buildings. And you're right, that is the problem. We can certainly point to the requirement that the Energy Code mandated at Tivoli, that the shopkeepers have tinted double-pane glass, preventing shoppers from seeing into the glass, all the more kind of ridiculous because the whole area is shaded. But really, the real problem is whether or not these requirements are discouraging people from repurposing buildings in the older parts of our city, providing work for people who elect us. And I am a fan of sustainability, as everyone is, but I consider economic impacts of sustainability. And if we have tipped the teeter-totter too far toward energy conversation, conservation, to the point where we're costing people jobs, and we do have the highest unemployment rate in America still, what are we, in the third year of that statistic? Then simply, that's not sustainable. It's just not sustainable. A mistake was made, perhaps by the Code Council, perhaps by the legislature, although, as I understood the narrative you told, there's not been a single vote by Congress or the Nevada Legislature to impose this particular code on this particular city. There are a combination of regs and laws that have put us in this position, but if we're costing our citizens work, this isn't sustainable. And I appreciate your help. I mean, no criticism of you or your staff. The problem isn't that you've not been enforcing the code correctly. Problem is, is that the code may be wrong. And that's, I think, the hard task before the council over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, Councilman. And I'd add to that, I think your recommendations sound, sound, and a process for future investigation and actual facts to substantiate the direction that ultimately we are going to be taking.
If I may, to Councilman Beers, we did look into the Tivoli glass issue, Councilman, because you kind of shocked me when you brought that up in briefings, and I went, oh, my. My wasn't the word I used, but anyway. We looked at that, and the developer of Tivoli insisted that the tenants that move in to those first floor, under the shade canopy, put their own windows in. And we looked at the plans that were brought in, and those plans, the glass was prescribed by the design professional on that, or the tenants themselves. We had told the developer that, you know, you're good, all kinds, different kinds of glass, and they said, well, it's under the, precisely to your point, it's under the shaded area. And most of them brought in that kind of glass, and it was either the design professional working with the tenant improvement owner or the owner themselves that put that glass in. It was not a requirement of the building department. Now, the building department does not value engineer projects. When you bring a project in, we are looking, because these codes are minimum requirements. And we're looking, does it meet the minimum requirement of the code? And if the answer is yes, that's why we approve it. If it meets more than the minimum of the code, we still approve it. And we don't go back to the designer and say, well, you didn't have to do all of that, because those designs and those plans are proprietary copyright interest of that designer. And we're not going to design their buildings for them. We assume they have reasons for putting those types of elements into their plans, and we just look to see that it meets code. If it meets code, we approve it. So, those windows were not a requirement of our department. They were a decision of either the tenant owner or the designer themselves, and sold it to the tenant owner.
And thank you for that research.
You're welcome, sir.
Nevertheless, they were, it's rather nonsensical and expensive in an attempt to comply with a code that we just updated three years ago, and now we have a new update.
Agreed. And we've discussed that, and the windows did not have to be at the caliber that they were, for the very reason that you were talking about. A lesser standard window would have met code and been acceptable to us.
I think my point is not critical of what we did. It is that we continually bombard designers with a new code every three years, and so they're struggling to try to figure out what to do. Their client is not asking them to do this, it is government that is asking them to do this. And it's a new set of rules every three years, and it's just as difficult on them as it is for the policymakers up here.
Understood.
And as it is on you guys to keep up with this thing that changes every three years, too.
Understood, Councilman.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the council? Okay.
There may be others.
Thanks, Chris. Are you okay?
I'm fine.
You're fine? All right. Very good.
There may be others that want to say something.
Let's move on to item number forty-three. I'm sorry, item number forty-two, discussion for possible action regarding the submittal of the City of Las Vegas 2013-2014 Action Plan that secures a little over $7 million in U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and State of Nevada funds. This is all ours. Mr. Arndt.
Thank you. Good afternoon. For the record, Bill Arndt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This item is the qualitative document that the City of Las Vegas sends to the Department of Housing and Urban Development on how we're going to spend funds received for next fiscal year. With me today is Tim Whitright, Neighborhood Development Manager. I'm going to turn it over to Tim, who's going to provide a very brief explanation of what this plan is.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, just very briefly, this document, again, is simply an outline of the affordable housing, homeless services, and community development activities, which have already received allocations of grant funding, which we received from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Again, in terms of $7 million are contained within this document, they've all been reviewed by City Council and approved in previous public hearings. Those recommendations were brought to you by the Community Development Recommending Board, which is a thirteen-member citizen board. You also reviewed recommendations from our Affordable Housing Review Committee as well for any of our affordable housing developments, again, contained within the action plan. At each of those public hearings, there was opportunity for public comment. There's, again, opportunity for public comment today, and we'll continue to accept public comment through May 13th. The document itself must be submitted to HUD by May 15th. Certainly happy to answer any questions we have about the document.
Okay. Any questions from the council? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. All right. Item number forty-three has been stricken. Item number forty-four has been obeyed. Item number forty-five has been obeyed. So, we'll go on to item number forty-six, discussion for possible action regarding an appeal of a work card denial for David Lopez at Wahoo's Fish Taco, 1000 South Rampart, Suite 21. This is in Councilman Beers' ward. Is the applicant here? Okay, why don't you come on down, applicant?
Mayor Protem, may I ask?
Sure.
May I just make an announcement at this time? Because I want to meet with the applicant on item forty-seven before that item is called. And so, I don't want to necessarily trail it yet, Your Honor, so I just want to make sure that...
Okay, well, we'll do item forty-six.
If that person's in the room.
Your Honor?
Is the applicant from item forty-seven here? Applicant from item forty-seven, which is, let me just check, which is Radio City Pizzeria, Imani, Pasaja, Saou. Is that person here?
Guess not.
Okay. Guess not. So, we'll deal with that when we get to it.
Mayor, I can offer to make this more complicated by moving immediately that we grant a site-specific work card for one year for the applicant.
Okay. You guys good with that?
For the record, Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. Yes.
Okay. Do you understand that, applicant? Why don't you go ahead and identify yourself, and just tell me if you understood what Councilman Beers just said.
Hello, my name is David Lopez, and yes, I do understand.
Okay. Very good. You do understand. Okay. Very good. Then let's go ahead and make a motion on Councilman Beers, or make a vote on Councilman Beers' motion. And go ahead and vote, and post. Okay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, and good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number forty-seven, discussion for possible action regarding an appeal of a work card denial for Imani Pasaja Saou at Radio City Pizzeria, Fremont, 508 Fremont Street. This is in Ward Three. Councilman Coffin, one more time, is the applicant present for this? Okay, I don't see that.
Mr. Mayor Protem.
Councilman Coffin?
I move to deny.
Okay. Most, you all heard the motion? Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay. Item number forty-eight, resolution R-27-2013, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency in connection with the Quick Start Program agreement between the RDA and Nicole Associates, owner and downtown hipsters located at 1017 South First Street, to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the RDA. This is in Councilman Coffin's Ward, Ward Three. This item is also related to redevelopment agency, item number five, RA-16-2013, and six, RA-17-2013, and council item forty-nine, R-28-2013. Mr. Arndt.
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I hate to do this on your second solo flight with the gavel, but I can't vote on this matter. I'm conflicted, and we only have four members up here.
Okay, then, I will, I'll trail forty-eight and forty-nine for now. You're okay with item number fifty, correct? Okay, so let's go to item number fifty. Thank you for telling me that. Item number, so we'll go to item number fifty, R-29-2013, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency in connection with the Quick Start Program agreement between the RDA and ProView Series owner and QSP participant located at 813 East Ogden Avenue, to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the RDA, Ward Three. Councilman Coffin, this item is related to redevelopment agency, item number seven. Mr. Arndt, let's talk about item number fifty.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Bill Arndt, Economic and Urban Development. This item, as you indicated, is related to redevelopment agency, item seven, which was heard this morning during the agency meeting, and the applicant, Mr. Cameron Fullod, attended. The applicant is converting an existing motel at 813 East Ogden to corporate suites. They're eligible for a $45,000 grant from the Visual Improvement Program. The property owner is spending $430,000 of his own funds in the project. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Okay, this is in Councilman Coffin's ward.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had a full discussion, including the presentation from the owner, at the redevelopment agency meeting, so I would just encourage those who have an interest in this issue to make reference to the meeting. In fact, we'll make reference at this time to the minutes of the RDA meeting on this subject. And so, now I move for adoption, for approval.
Okay. We have a motion to approve? Please vote.
Steve.
And post? Can I do forty-eight and forty-nine while you're here? All right. Motion carries. That's item number fifty. Let's go back to item number forty-eight, the hipsters. I already read that into the record, so Mr. Arndt, item number forty-eight.
Thank you. I heard this morning...
Yes, Councilman Beers.
Stand by just one moment, please, Mr. Arndt. I'm sorry. I have to disclose by law that I have a, several incidences of business interests in common with one or more of the owners of this facility, this facility not being one of them. Nevertheless, council has advised me to abstain and not participate in the discussion, so I'm going to go see if there's any lunch left.
Okay. Go have some lunch. Very good. Okay, Mr. Arndt.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This item is a Quick Start Grant, which is for the interior of the building, for Mingo's Restaurant, doing, that's the DBA, the property, the business owner is Downtown Hipster LLC. This is in the art square. They're eligible for a $29,639 Quick Start Program Grant. We heard discussion at this morning's agency meeting. Like to reference those discussions. From item five, there is a rendering on the overhead, and perhaps for the viewing audience, staff recommends approval.
Very good. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Your Honor. And my comments on the previous item will be identical here. We had a good presentation from the owner, and it's a wonderful place on an alley. Once you get inside, it's really something. This is industrial chic at its best. We are all going to be invited whenever he decides to really have an opening, and, but he's softly opening now, and he's doing pretty good. So, I move for adoption of item forty-eight.
Okay. We have a motion to approve? Please vote. And the motion carries. Thank you very much. Item number forty-nine, R-28-2013, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency in connection with the Commercial Visual Improvement Program agreement between the RDA and Nicole Associates, owner Downtown Hipsters located at 1017 South First Street, to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the RDA. This is in Councilman Coffin's ward, Ward Three. This item is also related to redevelopment agency, item number five and six, and council item number forty-eight. Mr. Arndt.
Thank you. Bill Arndt, Economic and Urban Development. This is for a $12,430 Visual Improvement Program Grant for the same property and business as the preceding item. Staff recommends approval.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the council? Councilman Coffin?
I move for approval of item forty-nine.
Thank you. Oh, we have a motion? Please vote. And post. Motion carries. Let's see, we did item fifty, so we will go to item fifty-one, R-30-2013, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution consenting to the undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency in connection with the Commercial Visual Improvement Program agreement between the RDA and T-Brio Two and Project M located at 106 South Sixth Street, to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the RDA. This is in Councilman Coffin's ward, Ward Three. This item is also related to redevelopment agency, item number six. Mr. Arndt?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Bill Arndt, Economic and Urban Development. This is for a Visual Improvement Program Grant of $45,000 for La Camita, which is on Sixth Street. We heard a presentation this morning at the agency meeting for the agency item. Staff does recommend approval.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the council? Do I have a motion, Mr. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you very much, Mayor Protem. This, again, I suppose because people who are only watching the council meeting on these four items that we've just, this is the last of four that we've been discussing, they're so important, they really ought to look at the broadcast of, or read the minutes of the redevelopment agency, where we really had a good presentation and a discussion on these items, particularly this last one, because it is quite a resurrection of an old dingy building. And it is part of it. I mean, there's a lot of businesses in this one building, and this is the back end, next to the alley, in a wonderful Mexican restaurant called La Camita. And it's behind the to the alley, and a wonderful Mexican restaurant called La Camita, and it's behind the Commonwealth at Sixth, near Sixth and Fremont, for those people who are interested in going down there and sampling the food. So I think that enough's been said, just that people should refer to that and understand and go down and try the food out like they should try the drinks at the Mingo's and everybody else's that's opened up. Thank you very much, Your Honor. I move for approval of item fifty-one.
Very good. We have a motion. Please vote. And post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to item number fifty-two, which are bills eligible for adoption at this meeting, as they've been heard at the recommending committee, so Bill Number 2013-14. Councilman Barlow, do you want the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay.
Bill Number 2013-14, First Amendment. In ordinance to update the city's licensing regulations by creating two new alcoholic beverage license categories, beer and wine room and ancillary brew pub, and prohibiting restricted gaming at an establishment where a beer and wine room alcoholic beverage license is held, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you. Okay, Councilman Barlow has made a motion to approve. Please vote.
First Amendment.
With the First Amendment. Motion carries. Item number fifty-three, also eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill Number 2013-15. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Bill Number 2013-15, in ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code to clarify that the remedies available to the city for sign violations under LVMC 1916-200 apply to sign violations under Chapters 1906 and 1908 as well, and to provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
Very good. We have a motion. Please vote. And post. Motion carries. Very good. Item number fifty-four, bill eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill Number 2013-16. Councilman Barlow, do you wish to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Bill Number 2013-16, First Amendment. In ordinance to authorize super graphic signage within the downtown Centennial Plan overlay district, establish standards and procedures relating thereto, and provide for other related matters.
Move for approval.
First Amendment.
First Amendment.
Councilman Ross?
Councilman Barlow, your motion is? What's your motion?
For approval. First Amendment.
With the First Amendment.
With the First Amendment.
What is the, could you just clarify the First Amendment?
Yes, the original, the original bill had a provision that review of a super graphic signage could not occur more often than every three years. The committee recommended that that be reduced to one year, so the current motion, which includes the First Amendment, would have that one-year provision rather than the three-year.
Councilman Ross?
What was the vote on the?
It was two to one.
Two to one, for one year. Okay.
Two to one, for one year.
Mayor, if I may retract that, thank you for bringing that to my attention. The, I would like to retract the First Amendment. I'm going to move, well, my motion would be for the three-year, and basically put it up for discussion here at the council.
So the motion is to accept the ordinance as it was written? Is that correct, without the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, the way we've done that in the past, for record-keeping purposes, is to have that be a Second Amendment, even though it's identical to the original proposal. That makes it easier for the clerk and the attorney's office to find what happened, but if you would like to propose that it be a Second Amendment going back to the three years, then that would suffice.
I'm sorry, because I did get up and leave. One more time. The vote of recommending was two to one, to leave it as is, or to amend it?
To amend it.
To amend it, mend it. The vote currently, there's no motion made yet.
I retracted it.
Okay, so there's no motion, so I'll just wait. Just sit there. Okay.
So my motion, so my motion, my motion will be to move forward as the original ordinance was designed, so that would be Second Amendment. That would be my motion.
Okay, so we have a motion with the Second Amendment to make it a three-year review. Let's go ahead and have a discussion on that. I just, I'll just pipe in myself. I'm in support of that particular motion. It seems to me that the folks who vetted this completely before even bringing it to the recommending committee recommended three years. I have no reason why I would not take their recommendation being three years, so I'm gonna support that motion.
Your Honor?
Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, I proposed the amendment in recommending to make a one-year review instead of three-year, and we didn't have any testimony in favor of that, except for my own opinion, and since then, opinions have come in in favor of the one-year. The reason is, is that, I think it was so eloquently stated by Councilman Beers, the, at the stakeholders' meeting, there was one important element missing, and that was the people who live in houses, the residents. This was a bill done with a lot of work by a lot of people, we call stakeholders in our jargon, but frequently, my experience has been over so many years, that stakeholders include only those people with an interest, a financial interest, or some sort of material interest in the outcome of a bill. Frequently, there are compromises worked out without, frankly, the airing of the content in the public. That doesn't mean it's an insidious plot of some kind by people in a closed-door room. It simply means that after a lot of work, people are upset because somebody might bring up an opinion that could be different than the stakeholders' compromise. So here you had a bunch of sign companies and a bunch of people in, who own tall buildings, and a bunch of folks who want things advertised, and they all get together and make a compromise. The problem is the First Amendment of the Constitution, which is a wonderful amendment. As we all know, we cannot regulate content of signs once they are put up. If you give a permit to somebody and say, put whatever you want, and it could be a couple hundred feet high, or a couple hundred feet wide, whatever, it's gonna be several thousand feet in acreage here, you talk about that, and you say, "Well, go ahead, make it as big as you like, and I won't say anything about what's in there," but my neighbors, and of course, this is where all the tall buildings are, generally speaking, in the downtown area, my neighbors, the ones who live in houses near these tall buildings, or live in condos right next to, or actually part of, these buildings, they don't have a say in what we're doing here, because they don't know this bill, they don't understand it. Now, I know this has caused a heart attack amongst some folks that participated in all of that, the fact that I would inject my opinion on this, but in reality, what you have are signs that are so big that you can see them for many, many miles, not just the little neighborhood around the building that wants to advertise. And I know we've already tied this down to where you can only advertise a product, a major component of your business. And so one would think, "Well, gee, that takes care of everything," but there's a lot of skin involved in the business, a lot of, if you look at the strip, there's a lot of T and A being advertised out there, and they're in a dilemma over what to do about that. Now, I don't have any problem with a Coke bottle going up, or a picture of a restaurant, or the name of a company, the name of a casino, and I don't even care if there's a pretty young lady, or man, with his mostly showing. It all depends on the taste, and so we cannot control taste. It's just out of our hands. I think, and when I look at, for instance, the D, which I have continued to vote for, the temporary sign permit they're using for their big, nice sign to advertise their company, I could see that at the city limits to the east, at Nellis, over 100,000 residents who can see that. It's even visible at the Mormon fort, I mean, the Mormon temple. You know, it's like, that's how far you can see the D. Now, you can use a creatively designed ad that large, and you can put up anything you like, under the ordinance as it is proposed to be adopted by the motion. You know, remember. So what are you gonna do? Are you gonna say, "I'm so sorry that that picture up there," which could resemble, for debate purposes, the skin that was exposed, and has been exposed for many years, in the Riviera's Crazy Girls ad, which pops up right on taxicabs in your front window of your car. Well, okay, or do you want it in the neighborhood? And the thing is, is I'm no Blue Nose, I'm no Puritan. As Mayor has said many times, I've lived here nearly all my life, so I grew up in this town, but I grew up in a town where you didn't have that all over. I know some people think when they moved to Las Vegas that it always was as it is, but that is not true. We did not see nudity at all in town. We did not see it in the neighborhoods, for sure, and this proposal will bring it to the neighborhoods, and it'll bring it to residents of any age who may or may not care about it. It doesn't affect me very much. I'm, you know, I'm an adult now, and I can take or leave what is out there, and I can filter it, but I think there's a lot of young people, and a lot of parents who don't want young people to be exposed a little early, or on a daily basis, for three years, to something that, because we may set up a rule, then we would hold up our hands and say, "I'm sorry. We're powerless to change it. We're powerless to make them take it down." So, for three years, can you imagine that? So I say, "Why not shorten the period of time just a little bit here? Bring it down to one year." That's not gonna stop anyone, it's not gonna stop anybody from putting up what they want, assuming it's in decent taste, in their judgment. Now, then if it's not in good taste, in my judgment, I'm not gonna touch it anyway. I can't. I can't touch it for one year. I can't, I suppose I could say something. I know one thing, when the complaints come in to something that's a little over the edge, I can say, "I didn't vote for that," but I'll tell them who did, because I'll say, "This is kinda nasty," but I can't help it, because the council said, "Tough luck, you can't touch it for three years." So, you know, again, I think that we're right there at the end of this game. We've got this drafted really well, and what you have is some people just upset because somebody did a little thinking, did a little driving, did a look in the neighborhoods that they represent, near tall buildings, and said, "This is something that probably, you know, it might be reckless, really reckless, to just turn it loose and let it go for three years. Why not one year? Take a look." Maybe that one year will suggest to somebody that they not go quite over the edge as they kinda hope to. Maybe it'll bring them back just a little bit. This ordinance doesn't try to govern taste, and I can't do that. We can't do that again, as I repeat. But I think we can at least tell people that if they want to go over the edge, their investment should be advertised over one year and not three, because whatever they're putting up, they're gonna get their money back. I mean, the idea of a return on investment is pretty, pretty high in this town. You know what you're gonna advertise out there. And if you wanna go over the edge and get a lot of press, and get a lot of hate mail, and phone calls into the council offices, you know, go ahead and put it up. But in the meantime, those of us who have to answer the problems, I'd prefer to have the situation solved in advance to the extent that we can, than to let it go on and on and on, as long as my speech, which doesn't quite have the half-life of plutonium, but it's getting there. So that's my reason for opposing now the motion that's on the floor.
Thank you, Councilman. There's your hands there. I know, Councilman Ross, and then I have a question. Mr. Steed, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilman Coffin, and fully respect your opinions, certainly. I would like, however, Mr. Fag, our Director of Planning and Development, to address the issues in regards to the review process, and how that is addressed within the ordinance. And then with your permission, Mayor, I'd like some of the industry representatives to get some things on the record with your permission.
Absolutely.
Flynn Fag, Department of Planning. Just again, to reiterate your question, you wanted me to clarify the review process?
The review process within the ordinance, yes, for the-
Okay. The process to apply for super graphic signage is through a master, excuse me, master sign plan, I'm sorry. I drew a blank there for a moment. Through a master sign plan process. What is required is that the applicant will file an application with our department, will review it, it will go before Planning Commission, Planning Commission will review it to make sure that it's in conformance with the code, and then it's forwarded with a recommendation to City Council. City Council will ultimately approve or deny the master sign plan application.
According to what is in the plan. They may not go beyond those parameters, correct?
Correct.
Just, their review is gonna be just, "Does this fit within the scope of this?"
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So that is the process for review and approval of super graphic signage, is through a master sign plan permit, that unlike other master sign plan applications, goes to City Council for final approval. There's also a notification process associated with that, where we send out notices prior to the Planning Commission meeting, and prior to the City Council meeting, to all property owners within 1,000 feet of the affected property.
Another question. Was there ever in this whole development a point where any of these wraps would go before a group of ownership who qualify with all, within the code, to wrap their building, that there would be a consensus among them with input from the city? Or is that something we're fiddling with First Amendment rights?
No, that is not something that is contemplated under this ordinance. Again, it's a two-step process, Planning Commission, and then City Council.
Okay, thank you.
With Mayor and Council, plenty of notification, and two opportunities for the public to express their concerns with whatever is gonna be presented to the first Planning Commission, and then, of course, the City Council. That being said, Mr. Fag, thank you very much, but I would like to get some industry reps up to, and talk about how this all came about. This was a collaboration, Mayor and councilmembers, of the industries, both the large building owners in downtown, and the billboard industry, who, of course, that's their bread and butter is advertising. So I'd like these two young ladies to come up and say a few words about this.
May I ask a question before Mr. Steed disappears? Because I saw that. Is there anything, was there anything, as this whole effort's been moving forward, to consider a committee beyond the city who adheres to the code, to ask always to have the highest standards, and do the things that we have in there, and have them part of a review process, or is that in violation of First Amendment rights?
When you talk about a review process, are you talking about reviewing the content of the sign?
According to the committee that is licensed to go ahead and have these wraps, yes. That they commonly agree, we are going to have the highest standard here, this is Las Vegas, this is not, you know, some, whatever, and we all endorse this sign, we agree, or the majority. I don't know how many were in that committee. But in order to be sensitive to what Councilman Coffin's saying, and I hear that, and yet, I'm not sure, because after something's up for a whole year, the damage has been done. Is there anything prior, before it comes before building, that they would commonly agree, "This is the quality of what we wanna have in our city," as a review committee?
Whatever committee you put up, at whatever point in the process, whether before it goes to building or afterwards, is going to be a committee acting on behalf of the city, and that committee will be bound by the same First Amendment restrictions as you are. So whatever you can do under the First Amendment, you could do, and whatever they can do, they can do, but whatever is a violation of the First Amendment, they get no more ability to do that than you have.
If you move them before the Planning Committee, the Planning Commission of the city, and you have an independent ownership qualifying by nine stories and all of that, these are the ones that are permitted. This is the group that's permitted to have wraps. They may opt to, but they may not. Prior to coming under the umbrella of government, can that, could that committee be established where they review among themselves the stakeholders? where they review among themselves the stakeholders? We don't think this is the quality or the caliber, so that we don't get, let's say, what Councilman Coffin brought up is what's on the back of the, the backside of all the ladies that are on the taxis. And they would say, you know, "That's not the quality of what we're trying to do down here." And the majority of the 10 of us that qualify, that are here today, will say, "You can't go before planning." Before it goes to any government arm.
If that committee is written into your ordinance, and if that committee has the ability to say more than just, "I don't like it," that's not what we'd like to see. If that committee has the ability to keep you from moving forward, it has become a part of the government, and it's subject to the same First Amendment limitations as you are.
Okay. Now, if in fact, they're independent, they're just the group that continues to change and grow and be qualified under the plan of these, the building's wraps, could they independently do that and be perhaps the first place before it comes to government? Independent, totally independent. So all, those that have qualified for the ability to put up a wrap can have a pre-screening of their own, independent of everything?
If, if by independent, you mean that they cannot stop a pro, a sign from being presented and approved? If you're saying that they have the ability to stop something, they are part of you, whether you call them independent or not, you have made them part of your government.
If we make them, what if they make themselves? What if they create a committee among themselves?
If somebody wants to go through that committee voluntarily, that's fine, but you can't force them. The minute you force them to go through the committee, they are part of the government.
Okay, got it, thank you. Yes, please, Council.
Question. And thanks, Val, for that, for that clarification. The way the, the way the ordinance is structured right now, as far as the original proposal, and this is a question more so for Val, I believe. Val, did he leave?
Wait, you didn't go, yeah, I said no.
I don't know why he would leave. This is a, this is a very touchy topic, so you may wanna stick around just for a couple more minutes.
I was just gonna go talk to Mr. Fag, so it's not like I was leaving the building.
Where is he? Oh, feel free to, feel free to come up here, Flynn.
Okay, I'm ready.
All right. I haven't lost my train of thought now. Going back to the, the content, content, as it relates to the content. When the master sign plan comes before, so the sign plan comes before, is this council will not have an opportunity to determine whether or not that is the type of content that we would like to see, and so therefore, it cuts into the First Amendment?
You have the ability to look at the content to make sure that it complies with the, the requirement of the ordinance, that it be a facility or a business operation that's part of that property?
And we have the determination to--
But as far as to say--
--make judgment as to whether or not it meets that qualification.
Exactly. As to the taste aspect of it, you're gonna have no more input on that as you do on any other master sign plan, or any of staff has on any sign review that staff does at a staff level. They can, they can, you and they are going to look at whether there's compliance with the code, but you're not going to say, "That is not according to the taste that we want to have." That's, that's the limitation that we have. So if someone, if someone brings forward--
So what would be an example of, of meeting the qualifications of the ordinance, however, not meeting the sensitivity, taste of the council?
I don't have one. Maybe, maybe Flynn does, but I don't have one.
If they, if they were to have a topless show in their hotel, and therefore had women or men, for that matter, dressed in dental floss? Would that meet the qualifications of the ordinance, however not the qualifications of the taste of the council?
It sounds like it. It sounds like what you're saying.
They can do that.
And that, and that would be a problem, because unless it is, unless the sign violates obscenity rules, it's something you're not going to be able to say no to.
Okay. And I know a lot of work went into this from the, all of the interest groups. And so the only thing that we have at this point before us is our ability to say how long of a review this content, if you will, can be in place. There was a recommendation of a year. The, the original ordinance, as written, is three years. So that's the only leverage and the tool that this council has at this moment, is what I'm hearing from Council.
As far as I can tell, that's right.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
It'll be up for a whole year, I might--
Okay.
Please.
I guess I'm gonna take a crack at clarification and see if, if Mr. Steed agrees. I think, as I'm hearing this, whether the review is at one year or three years, we could not revoke a permit based on content considerations. We could merely revoke a permit just because we felt like revoking a permit that day.
The reality is, though, if, according to the ordinance that I've read, the way it's proposed, the, the, the business, the hotel or whatever, is allowed to advertise anything that has to do with what they're doing in their establishment. So according to Councilman Barlow's commentary, if they had the dental floss guys or girls in there, that was their show that they had signed on, which is knowing Vegas, if things got tough, that might well be there. There's nothing we can do about the content, for, one way or another, for a whole year or for a three-year period, which is why I was thinking, if you put all the stakeholders together, they would say, "Please don't do that. We're trying to elevate what Las Vegas is about." But we can't do that either, because they're an arm of the government, is what I understand. So dental floss, you've just created a whole new industry, Councilman Barlow.
I know. I know, I'm the dental floss guy. I, I hate to be wishy-washy, but I, I'll, I'll have to retract my, my motion. I would like to retract my motion. And I would like to go with First Amendment, because that does concern me.
Well, if I may, Mayor.
Can we keep discussing? I mean, 'cause I do too. Please, Councilman Ross.
I, I, I think before Councilman, you make that-- Councilman Barlow, before you make that retraction, that you hear from the industry and hear what kind of investment and layout actually goes into what these, what these things before, before you make that, that--
And, and actually, I did. I, I spoke to, and I hate to do this to the folks in the industry as well, because I, I understand how much goes into it, but it does concern me as a resident, as a citizen and a father. And as the mayor pointed out, things get tough and, and the line gets, gets pushed. Not to say that, that will happen, I hope it doesn't happen, but I just don't want that on my conscience.
Okay, we got more comments. Before we get to you, you may sit and relax, because we got comments, please. Thank you, good to see you, Mr. Ross. Please, is it all right if we continue, Council?
Sure, I just, I just wanna remind the council and the public and those that are the stakeholders, the, the long tedious process. We just didn't say, "Hey, let's do this."
No, no, no.
We included as many people as we could to get to this point.
Without question. I think, I mean, we're all appreciative of that. I think it's healthy, because we never, for those of you who are watching television in this program, whatever time of day, if it's four in the morning. The reality is, the seven of us can never get together, together to have a conversation. And by the time one of us talks to these two council people on the left, and they have new input, then you have to go all the way back over to the other two before you go to the third one, because there's so much new information. The only place we can discuss together is in public forum. So with that, knowing how much effort's gone into it, Mayor Protem, you go, and I have another question.
Okay, I, I just, I just wanna be clear in my own mind what this is about, and somebody can tell me if I'm wrong. The, the ordinance says that a, a building can put up a, a wrap, and the content of the wrap has to have something to do with the business. And everybody kind of agrees with that. If somebody puts up a, a, a super graphic that somebody, one of us thinks is inappropriate, there's nothing we can do about it. So I don't care if it's a one-year review, or a five-day review, or a three-year review, or a 10-year review, we're not reviewing it for content. So that's a whole different discussion. The only reason we're having a, a review is to make sure it's not falling apart, it doesn't look, it, the wrap is, is, isn't tearing, that the wrap actually looks nice, not the content, but the wrap. So it seems to me that somebody who puts up a wrap that is pretty expensive to put up, a three-rear, three-year review is reasonable to review whether the sign looks nice, it's not falling apart. And I, I just, I find it hard to believe that a, somebody would put something up that is so inappropriate that we, if we didn't like it, the community wouldn't like it, and I think there would be a backlash against that particular business. So I, I'm going to support the ordinance, I'm gonna support a three-year review, because that's what we're reviewing, is the maintenance of it. I just don't think, I think a one-year review, it's, one, one year is really not gonna cause a lot of damage to a, a super graphic. It's three years where it may start to deteriorate, and it probably wouldn't even deteriorate at that point. So that's what's going on in my mind when it comes to this ordinance, and if I'm thinking differently, somebody needs to tell me that.
No, this is free speech. That's what this is all about in consideration, and knowing the time, energy, and effort that the stakeholders and everybody involved has had on it, but considering, I mean, even waiting for a year for the dental floss picture to come down, I do think, but you said, though, that the public pressure on the business, and it, it does reflect on what, what's decided here. So at this point, then, did they disappear on us? Where are our ladies? I let you go too far.
Well, while they're coming up, Mayor, if I just wanna state this, Councilman Anthony pointed something out, and this is what I hope the, the industry representatives also get on the record. In the, in the ordinance, it's specific in regards to what they can and cannot advertise. And in section, in general provisions under paragraph D, "Super graphic signage may not include off-premise message and is limited to on-premise messages that identify, announce, or advertise the specific principle, business, operations, or attractions that are housed on the premises of the building to which the sign is attached." So Councilman Anthony, I think it's important that, that be on the record, and important enough, 'cause I want the industry representatives up here to nod their heads in, in agreeance, or also talk about these issues, because they're very important to, to many council members, on how this is gonna transpire. So with the Mayor's permission, I'd ask you all to come back up.
Good thing I came back.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Terry Murphy, I represent D Rock Gaming. And I guess you can see why it took us three years to get here. There are many people who were involved in the process who were not here. Obviously, we'll comply with whatever this body decides. But there is a, there is a significant expense involved in, in not only fixing the sign and designing the sign and going through the process. And I've said this before, and it's not an argument I wanna get into, but if, if a sign costs 50 cents a foot to get approved, and the signs we're talking about are several hundred thousand feet, and I only have that for a year, I've argued before for perhaps a cap on that fee, but in addition to that, you also have several hundred thousand dollars in expense to put the sign up. My sense is, and I certainly would have to eat my words if this prediction didn't come true, but my sense is that among those who are regulated with unrestricted gaming licenses, we've seen other properties in the past go over that line and, and receive significant penalties. So I don't think that that would be the case. However, the ordinance does allow for non-gaming properties of a certain height to engage in advertising. However, because it's on-premise only, those signs are not generating any income whatsoever for the people who put them up. They're simply to say, "Here we are. This is where we are. They're advertising my business." If it were off-premise advertising, which we're not asking for, then they'd be generating revenue on it, and it would be a whole different ball of wax. I would also like to say, on the issue of on-premise versus off-premise, I'd like to thank my colleagues in the billboard industry for putting up with us for three years on this issue and being very patient and kind. I mean, that's, that's about what I have to say. I don't envy your position now, because it's been a long battle. And I do appreciate Councilman Coffin's position, because neighbors may have an opinion. Nevertheless, if we go through the process and our sign conforms with the size restrictions and the material restrictions and all of that, and a year comes and somebody, hopefully no client of mine, puts up something that is objectionable, the council can't remove it because it's objectionable. You could remove it because the--
A lawsuit. There will be a lawsuit.
Well, you could remove it because it was tattered or it didn't meet standards. So I've tried to think of a way that, that the neighborhoods could be satisfied in the last few weeks since the recommending committee, and I, pardon me?
Mayor, if I may, that, that issue with the, with neighborhoods is already addressed in the ordinance, that must conform to our residential standards, just like our title says so today.
Okay. Councilman Barlow wanted to ask or make a comment in here, and we'll continue on with this. And thank you for your patience, but truthfully--
Thank you.
And Councilman Coffin--
Who's first? Who is first here?
I'll be first, and, and Councilman Coffin has a follow-up comment. Ms. Murphy, you, you are absolutely right. This, this conversation has been an accordion, as you can very well see here today, as far as, you know, thinking that we've reached a very close compromise, and then one comment can come about and unglue everything. And specifically, when you have attorneys get involved and basically, you know, bring things to your attention that, in their opinion, as our legal counsel, share with us what we can do, what we can't do, what we should do, what we shouldn't do. All of that gets very perplexed amidst the cloud of, of politics. And with this particular ordinance, I believe with the year in place, that the chances of your client or anyone else's client, for that matter, putting up as much money as you stated, 50 cent a square foot, and the size of the sign, they're going to regulate themselves. You all, your industry will regulate yourself, knowing that, for example, if this one-year hammer was held over your head, if you will, you're going to make sure that everything is in compliance, that it's to the specs and the liking and the taste of the council. Therefore, the chances of that particular signage not being approved 12 months later for, after the review condition, in my opinion, is slim and nut. And therefore, I believe, for me, that's a nice wedge where the council still has say in content without having to come out and say that we're against this particular content, because your clients themselves will basically make sure that what they're putting up falls clearly within the, the guidelines, because that one-year review could ultimately affect their bottom line and the money that they expense. And I believe that that could possibly be that hidden compromise, that one year, because it, it doesn't take you to that full level of comfort as far as that three-year and the money's expense for the sign, but it also provides a level of comfort for residents in the sense that if, in fact, it does go up-- in the sense that if, in fact, it does go up, and I know some state that they wouldn't want to see it up a month, and neither would I, but at least we know that we're closer to getting that content down versus having to wait an entire election term, if you will, three years. That's an entire term of someone's term in office to see a sign, specifically as it relates to content. So in my opinion, I believe that that just may be that hidden policing measure for both sides of the conversation.
Thank you, Your Honor. And the other thing about cost has been brought up, and 50 cents a square foot, I believe, is the permit fee.
For all signs.
That is, it's a one-time charge, isn't it? You could change it three or four times, the sign, and you would just pay the one time, right? You can leave it up five years, or six months, change it again. You've only paid one time.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, so it's not like you have to keep paying that sign permit fee over and over again.
We could, if that, if your amendment goes anywhere, it would be, hopefully clarified that if a fee was paid and a sign was taken down and then put back up, it wouldn't have to be paid again.
But if it were different...
Unless it was non-compliant with code.
Or a different shape, or a different, whatever.
Completely different, but...
If you change content...
They can change, they don't have to leave the sign up a year.
What is, Flynn, what is the fee amount for the wrap?
The 50 cents per square foot that has been referred to is the standard fee that we charge for any sign. And so that's our standard sign review fee.
So for a point of clarification, if I put up a sign, the big R, for six months, and I pay the fee, and I take it down, and I want to put up the big B, do I have to pay again, or do I fall under the original 50 cent under the big R?
Much like billboard signs, even though they are a different animal, even though that they change on a regular basis, you don't have to repay the fee. The only time that you would have to repay the sign permit fee is if the sign's structure significantly changes. That would probably also require a change to their master sign plan approval if they were to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protam?
Okay, so what I'm kind of hearing is that, from up here, is that nobody's really against the super graphics, but we're having this one-year, three-year discussion, and I think it should be three years. Some people, do you care if it's one year or three years? Because I can change my mind one year if it's not going to have a big deal to the super graphic industry, so...
If I might, Mayor Protam, my problem is not the one-year or the three-year. The horse is already out of the barn. Day one, when something's gone up, looking at something that's offensive on a building, and it's up there for 365 days. So to me, it really isn't a question of the one-year, three-year. I don't know how legally, which we can't do anything about, obviously, because First Amendment writes, how does the city protect its trying to become a dignified place and have any control over what's going on that sign with a hotel that decides to have a topless place or something to attract attention, which it will do, and bring in customers? How can we, we can't do anything about it. So a year to me, or three years, or 12 years, or 15 years, once the horse is out of the barn, the horse is out of the barn.
Well, the way to fix that is not to approve super graphics. You just don't approve super graphics, then you don't have to worry about content. So that's the easy way to deal with that.
Well, thank you.
That's the only way to deal with that. So the, we get, now we get into the question on whether you even have super graphics in the first place.
And I love the D sign. I think it's fabulous.
Your Honor.
Councilman.
The other way to get to where the mayor protem...
Wait, excuse me one second, if you would. Mayor Protam.
I still like them to answer the question. Terry and, or all three of you.
Can you wait a last...
Sure.
Okay, please go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council. I'm Tabitha Fittiman, 8345 West Sunset Road, for the record, here on behalf of Lamar. All I'll say is that this has been intimated, this process has taken quite a long time. There's been a lot of stakeholders involved, although they are not all present here today. And there's been a lot of discussion on all of these points. As far as Lamar is concerned, really all they care about is the definition of on-premise versus off-premise, and the fact that this is limited to on-premise. Director Fag did a great job of defining the ordinance and outlining what it allowed for in the planning commission hearing, and we are in full support of how that was presented at that time. So that's all I can say. I don't know that that's very helpful, but...
It was very helpful, because the fact is that you are all together and comfortable together.
Yes.
Is wonderful.
Yes.
And I know Mr. Fag's done a phenomenal job working on this, and the support, but it really, we're talking about the Constitution of the United States, and we don't have any control over.
Right.
And that's bothersome to me, because my hope would have been that those who are involved, and the stakeholders, would get together and say, you will not put up that type of garbage, because we don't want that for our city. So, and I know Mr. Rowe is here talking to the same issue, and perhaps your time to speak, then Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Russell Rowe here on behalf of Boyd Gaming, 3900 Paradise Road, Suite 208. As Tabitha said, this has been a long process, and we're in a bit of an odd position as Boyd Gaming, because as you recall, we were vehemently opposed to super graphics when they were first discussed as off-premise. Our major concern has been twofold. One is aesthetics of the downtown area and the long-term impact, because it's such a compact area as compared to Las Vegas Boulevard, it's a totally different animal. And then two is consistent application, make sure all the properties are on the same playing field. Those who have already put up super graphics, I understand this ordinance would apply to those folks as well, so everyone's on the same playing field. With respect to the one-year, three-year, we support the three-year because we were part of negotiations for the past three years, and that's what everyone agreed to, and that's where we ended up. That said, we also respect you as the council. You are the policymakers, and as Councilman Coffin has indicated, there are reasons to look at other proposals. With respect to the ultimate issue of content, you're right, Mayor, one year or three years doesn't matter, but I think, going back to Terry's comments about gaming properties in particular, and meaning non-restricted licensees, that's a different animal. Las Vegas Boulevard in the county has had super graphics, although essentially unregulated because their code doesn't even have a definition of super graphics. But as you know, they've been up for several years, several years, really without incident. The concerns of the county, as Councilman Coffin referenced earlier, is not on content, it's the fact that they began to proliferate off the strip, and that's what generated the conversations in Clark County with respect to super graphics. I would suggest to you that the reason why super graphics have not had content issues on Las Vegas Boulevard is because they're non-restricted licensees, they're regulated by the Gaming Control Board. The Gaming Control Board can find gaming properties, gaming licensees, because of content, and as Terry indicated earlier, that has been done, although not with respect to super graphics, actually with respect to content on billboards, which has the exact same problem as super graphics. You really can't control the content on a billboard, but we have companies in Las Vegas that operate at a very high ethical level, and we haven't had those problems in Las Vegas for the most part. So what I would suggest to you is, when it comes to the gaming properties, there hasn't been a problem with respect to content, at least as it's been proven as super graphics have performed on Las Vegas Boulevard.
However, I'm sure...
And that's the only guidance I could give you.
If, in fact, they were made by the Gaming Control or Gaming Commission to take it down for offensiveness, there'd be a big lawsuit. Right away, lawsuit, First Amendment rights. So they haven't done it yet, but it could be something with which they'd have to deal, and there would be a First Amendment lawsuit right there, right there. Can't do it. So that they haven't is a blessing, but I see Christmas future.
The fines have been significant without lawsuit because of the license that's at stake, and in fact, most of them are now publicly traded companies, so they prefer to not skirt the line.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Coffin, back to you.
Well, I think that we've had a pretty thorough airing of this. It's, you know, if you were to not like somebody's advertising, you know, it's for sure that the neighbors don't like it. But the reason they wouldn't like it, the business neighbors might not like it, was because they would have to go down in the dirt, too, and that's kind of where you go. If the second that somebody goes to the dental floss, even in one year, others will be tempted to do the same thing. So you really have kind of a situation where there will be a self-governing aspect, and I don't want the council to be regulating content, because that is a snakebit. You couldn't get in there and come out with your hands clean. So it's better to just, that if content ever came up in a discussion, I would certainly not approve of it. And you know what? If it got so bad that you didn't like it, you could simply remove the ordinance at some future date. I don't know whether that means anything to anybody, but like, you could, again, as I say.
I think...
Repeal the ordinance at some time, should this become too unwieldy. I mean, you could do that, Your Honor. If even in the one-year situation, if you saw a race to the bottom, as I call it in committee, where somebody had a skin club inside the hotel, or whatever business they're in, it just might be an integral part of their business, skin club, and they had a tall building, or they're in a tall building, leaves some space in a tall building, and so they have that skin club. And the second the real skin starts to show, then, you know, it's going to force others to do the same thing. So you will be a race to the cheap, and I see that coming on the strip, but they're kind of waiting for us to act, to decide what to do. And I think we're really there. We really are. You've done a lot of work, everybody, including the sponsor. Everybody's there, and no one has said they're really opposed to one year. They simply said, well, it's going to cost us maybe a little more, but in reality, it doesn't, because the fee's the same, whether it's one month, one year, three years. So I just think that we probably can rely upon the goodwill of those people with licenses out there, but privileged licensed people don't go against the Gaming Control Board. They may be right as rain, and they will not cross the Gaming Control Board. It happens all the time. They're afraid to, because they make the license shake on the wall. But you can't make a furniture store license shake on the wall, you know, or a skin club. Gaming doesn't recommend, doesn't regulate them.
Councilman, I think, I mean, the voice of listening to the conversation and appreciating the time, energy, and effort that's gone into this, and the fact that you have come to, as stakeholders, a consensus, is admirable, but I think you fear, you can hear the concern, I shouldn't say fear. And so, knowing that there was a motion which was rescinded, down here, Councilman Ross, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to approve...
There is a motion on the floor.
I thought you pulled the back period. There's a motion on the floor, and then what'd you do? What, could you repeat your motion specifically so that we know?
My motion was to move for approval subject to First Amendment.
That's with the one year rather than three, correct?
That is correct.
With that motion there, Mr. Fag, could I have you back, please? Sorry, I'm so glad you stayed. I'll be back lunch.
Yes.
Beyond the fact that the stakeholders have asked for three years, with a one-year review, is that somewhat rudimentary? It just, each one of the billboards would come, or wraps would come back visually for us to look at? What would the process be?
The process would be that we would notify the property owner, the holder of the master sign plan approval, that they would need to come back before City Council, they would file an application with us, and then we would schedule it for the next available City Council meeting as close to their one-year anniversary as possible, and so that would be the process.
And would they then, two things, would there be a fee for that application?
Yes.
A second fee?
The standard required review fee that we have, which I believe is $500 plus the notification fee.
Do they then, if it's a one-year review, is that interminably, that they come back every year then for a review? If, in fact, once it's passed, it's passed. They don't have to come back the second year if they leave the sign up, correct?
It depends on your approval. It states in the proposed ordinance that any review period imposed under paragraph two for the purpose of determining whether super graphic signage continues to be appropriate at the location that is the subject of the application may not be for a period of less than, per the motion in the First Amendment, one year. If you choose to do a longer period, you may do so as part of that required review, or if you wish to take the required review off, you may also make that a part of your review.
So if, in fact, my building, wrap, were approved in a year's time, and I file again, I have to spend another $500? Well, that's what I was asking. Well, question, why would there be a second application just because it's going into a second year?
Every required review application has a fee, and the applicant is required to pay the notification fee. It takes staff time to process those applications, to write the report, to do the research, and so there's a fee associated with that.
Now, halfway through this second year, I'm approved, my sign's great, they love it, and approve it. Halfway through the year, I've decided I want to change the sign. Is it a year from that date that that sign's approved, because it meets all the specifications, and then I have to come back in a year again?
No, it's based on the required review date that is imposed by City Council.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Fag? Sorry? Okay, they're asleep at the end. Okay, so here we are with your motion. Okay, First Amendment on this. There is a motion. Please vote. And please post. Do you want to take odds on the, where we are? Motion passed. Okay, so we will move on. So that means there's a one-year review on these wraps.
Mayor and Councilman Barlow? Actually, this is a Val question. Now that this, his motion passed, is there any way to go back and amend it again? Because I have a suggestion for Councilman Barlow.
You always have the ability at the same meeting to rescind and reconsider, rescind and reconsider a previous vote.
This will be for both of you then, for Councilman Coffin and Councilman Barlow. What if we did a one-year administrative review?
To save on the $500?
Certainly, and I say that because this is a huge investment by these downtown gamers, any of the building owners.
That's why I was asking why. It doesn't have to...
Like that, great point.
Well, maybe that's a question, where's Val? Is he down there speaking to Flynn again?
Yeah, he's still there.
I see. I'm messing with you.
I'm tempted to leave, but go ahead.
I know. So between Flynn and Val, solid question, because that does concern me. That's why I was asking the mayor why, as it relates to the $500 reapplication fee for the review of condition. If it's administrative, is it still a $500?
The difference is that for an administrative review, we only charge the $500 review fee. We don't charge the public notification, because we don't do the mailings when we do administrative reviews.
So the mailing, depending on the size of the mailing, whether it's 500-foot separation or 1,500-foot, or 2,500, I think, do we go up to 2,500, or did we reduce that to 18?
No, just 1,500, is as far as we go out.
So the mailing then basically kicks in on top of the 500?
Correct.
And Mayor, with your permission, I can say that, Councilman, because if there is a sign that is a problem, annoying neighbors, annoying other businesses, I mean, that, we're going to know that right away. You're going to know that. And at that one-year review, you can just sit down with the director and say, hey, that one sign there is a problem, so let's, you know, when that one-year review comes around, let's have a discussion about it. But I also think, because this came from the industry, because I think we took the right steps as a local government in, including everybody that we could, who had interest in this, and they came up with their own rules, so to speak. I respect everything that Councilman Coffin is concerned about, and you, Councilman Barlow, but I think we're just making it harder. They're going to invest up to $300,000 for one of these signs, and I think at the one-year review process from City Council, they're not going to make that investment. No one will even do it. That's my opinion. That's what I think. So I think if we... So I think if we allowed an administrative review in 12 months, that gives the big building owners the, I would think, some level of security to know that they're going to make that initial investment. There's enough safeguards in the ordinance, both for residential neighborhoods, both for us. The approval process is arduous enough, it still has to go to Planning Commission, then it comes to the City Council. Your staff's going to review it. I think there are lots of safeguards in there to get where we want to get, at the end of the day. So I'm just going to make that recommendation to you.
May I ask a question?
Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. Question I would have is, what is an administrative review versus council review? Does it really, it really doesn't change anything, does it? In essence, it's like a desk audit. You can simply review and say, well, that sign can stay another year. Or you, not the sign, not the content, but you folks can still have a permit to have so many square feet of signage. Is that what we're talking about here? Because if, you don't want to give control of this to staff, you know, you don't want to put the blame on staff, and then we'd just be blaming them for problems that might occur. So do we still control the administrative review? I haven't been around here as long as you have, Councilman Ross, so I, you know, I don't know some of those terms. But if, if the responsibility still rests with the council, if we are notified that there is an administrative review coming, and that staff has to make a decision on whether to renew that permit, probably it'd be all right. But, you know, it would be cheaper. But would somebody tell me the difference, and whether or not council still has responsibility?
Madam Mayor, through you, I'd be happy to respond to that.
Please.
In terms of the review process, the difference between an administrative required review versus a public hearing required review in front of City Council, our action on the part of staff is going to be the same. We are going to draft a staff report. We are going to review the application for conformance both to the ordinance and to any conditions that have been placed upon the application. And then we are going to make a recommendation based on that. The prime difference is that, in administrative review, we are going to make a recommendation, and then either approve or deny that required review. Typically, what we have done as a practice is, for the particular ward where that required review is, we notify the respective council person of that and give them a copy of the staff report. The difference at a city council review is, again, there's the additional notification fee that we do, there's the additional time that it takes in order to do that and schedule it for a city council meeting. You still get our staff report and our recommendation, and you all get the opportunity to discuss our recommendations, and whether or not it's in conformance with the adopted code and with any conditions placed upon that application.
And since the code does not have any reference to content, and the approval does not have any reference to content, you can't deny or approve based on content.
That is correct, with one exception that I'll point out to you, and that is the limitation that we have in the ordinance relative to on-premise messages. That is our only leeway in terms of review of content.
So in essence, what the councilman is suggesting is, it still stays under council purview at all times, the terminology of administrative review. But I think that could save a lot of money to people, unless I'm, you know, I'm being snuck in by a Philadelphia lawyer who used to be an electrician.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes, please.
Down here. I don't mean to prolong this, but it certainly, what you're trying to do is fit what you want to happen on a review basis into our existing processes. And there's nothing to keep you from creating a separate process for this one. For example, you could say, the review comes before council, but you split up the cost of the administrative review seven ways between the seven of you, rather than having the, I'm just joking. In other words-
I was just-
None of us are smiling at that. That was not funny.
In other words, that fee could be waived, it could be reduced, it could be any number of things. It could be reapportioned. You don't have to follow the existing process, although you may.
Councilman Beers.
You know, I'm just doing a little searching on the internet here. It looks to me like the typical cost estimate installed for a wrap is a buck and a half a square foot. So if we're interested in the cost to these folks, we could look at a quantity discount on our 50 cent per square foot fee, given the large number of square feet that they would be expanding to compared to what these fees are typically today.
Or perhaps consider that, if, in fact, they have a sign up, everything's in good condition, and they can leave it up another year, or two, or three, or four, why should they pay another fee, except for somebody to go look at it? Is that, that would, or a reduced fee?
We could say 50 cents a square foot for the first 200,000 square feet, and 10 cents a square foot thereafter.
On that sign?
We could do anything we wanted, I guess.
Okay. Did you two, eyes down, hear that? Did you both hear that? No. Raise your hand if you heard exactly-
He lost me at splitting it seven ways.
Answer the question, please. Raise your hand if you heard what Councilman Beers said.
All I heard was splitting something seven ways, and my ears went deaf.
You are not a multitasker. Would you repeat it, please, Councilman Beers?
Yes, I was thinking that we could take the fee associated with the initial application, the 50 cent per square foot fee, and split it seven ways. I'm kidding.
You don't see him smiling.
No, I don't see you smiling, no. All right. So, given the large quantity of square feet that these people are going to be bringing to us on their sign permits, particularly compared to typical sign permits, perhaps one alternative, if we're concerned about the cost impact, is a quantity discount on square feet. So we could charge 50 cents a square foot for the first 200,000, and-
Well, the only thing that concerns me about that is opening up Pandora's Box, because then that opens the door for the billboard industry to come in and say, my billboard is so many square feet, and I want a discount because you gave them a discount. I have sewer connection fees, you gave them a discount. What makes that different from me and my discount and the connection fees? I'm personally staying away from fees. I'm okay, Councilman Ross, with the administrative, because it will save them a few dollars in the sense of not having to come back before council and making it more cumbersome than it has to be. And therefore, if it saves them, well, Flynn already stated that the $500 is what the application fee is going to be, and everything above that, as far as the mailing, may be in addition. So maybe we'll save them on the mailing costs, but that 500 fee would have to be in place in order for them, whether it be administrative or the council review.
May I add to that, Mayor?
Is that accurate, Flynn?
Correct. I thought, you said it really clear. And frankly, there already is a quantity discount built in. When you've got a flat fee, the larger the sign, the cheaper it is for square foot, anyway. So that's already in there.
And the fee could be, that the, Councilman Beers, the fee could be going the administrative route, because we'll basically eliminate the mailing costs and the teeing up for it to come back for council, and all of the work that staff has to do. So what we'll do is eliminate staff's labor inside of the, inside of the work being done in order for it to receive the appropriate administrative review at staff level versus council level.
Madam Mayor, if I might, just jump in and respond to Councilman Ross's request, and perhaps save you from having to have another vote. And I'll ask Mr. Steed to correct me if I'm wrong. The language in the proposed ordinance is that, any review period imposed, it doesn't specify that it has to be either a public hearing or an administrative review. So I believe there's enough flexibility in there, so that as each master signed plan application comes through to City Council, as part of that approval of the master signed plan, you would then dictate to staff, if you want that review, to be an administrative review or a public hearing review. And again, I think there's enough flexibility in the way that the ordinance is worded to give you the opportunity to choose which way you'd like to go with that, as each individual sign plan comes through.
And if the sign is approved, it's up for the year, and it's approved again, can that fee be waived?
It can only be waived if you waive the review.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And Mayor, and councilmembers, I think, there are times that we may even waive the review, if the sign isn't bothering anybody, if there's no complaints on it. And that might give the property owners a level of comfort and security to know they're going to make that initial investment. And we'll just take them on an individual basis.
Thank you. I think we've killed this and chopped it up. But I think the only concern was, and it really wasn't the three years, it was just putting up something that was distasteful, about which we have no control. So, we move on now to Item 55 through 59. Are we there? Okay, Items 55 through 59, bills 2013-18, 2013-19, 2013-20, and 21, and 2013-22 are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. Do I have to read these? No, we will move on to new bills. Thank you. Okay, this is Item 60. Item 60 and 61, bills 2013-23 and 2013-24 will be heard at the Recommending Committee Tuesday, April 14th. And they are assigned to council members Anthony Barlow and Coffin, and we will, and again, that will be Tuesday, May 14th. We'll move on to Item, these are the ones that have to be read. City Attorney, please.
I'd be happy to. Bill number 2013-23, an ordinance to change the billing and payment of sewer service charges from an annual basis to a quarterly basis, increase the fee for releasing a sewer lien, and provide for other related matters. Bill number 2013-24, an ordinance to amend the city's version of the Southern Nevada amendments to the 2009 International Energy Conservation Code, to exempt certain activity regarding buildings constructed before 2009 from complying with energy conservation standards that otherwise would apply, and to provide for other related matters.
Thank you very much. We will move on to public hearing. Item 62. This is EOT 48686, and this is applicant owner 9440 West Sahara Holdings LLC for possible action or request for an extension of time for a non-conforming tavern at 9410 West Sahara Suite 150A, APN 16306, 816037. This is in Councilwoman Wrong. This is C1 Limited Commercial, Zone 2, Councilman Beers, and staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, I declare it open. Is the applicant present? And you want to introduce yourself, and say who you represent, what you're doing?
Absolutely. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council.
Do you want to go right up close to the mic, or bend it?
My apologies.
Bend it.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Amanda Litt. I work for Moran Law Firm, located at 630 South 4th Street. I'm here on behalf of 9440 West Sahara Holdings LLC.
Thank you. Comments before you make a motion? Because it is a public hearing, and I would like to open it.
Please do.
Okay, it's a public hearing. Anybody wishing to be heard on this item, please come forward, state your name. Hearing none, seeing none. Councilman Beers. I will close the public hearing first. Now, Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move approval.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote, and please post. And that motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will move on to Item Number 63, also a public hearing, EOT 48842. And this is applicant owner Fremont Properties LLC for possible action or request an extension of time for a non-conforming tavern at 1930 Fremont Street, APN 13935803005. This is Commercial 2, or C2, general commercial. This is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffins. And the staff recommends denial. And this is a public hearing, which I declare open. But first, I'm going to ask Mr. Fag, why was there for recommending denial?
Madam Mayor, thank you very much, Flynn Fag, with the Department of Planning. The reason for our recommendation of denial is that this is the third extension of time on this particular non-conforming use. It would suggest that with this many extensions of time, that perhaps a different type of tenant may be appropriate. However, we do have the applicant here today, who does indicate that the property owner has a potential tenant for the space. I'll let her speak to that issue. If that is the case, then staff would support a recommendation of approval.
Thank you very much. Would you please introduce yourself, and are you the owner or representative?
Lucy Stewart, 3900 Meadows Lane, representing the owner. And yes, as Mr. Fag indicated, that we do actually have a tenant. We appreciate your patience and the time in giving us extensions over the years. The new tenant, they actually do have a signed lease, so it's, and it's for a five-year lease. It's for a business that you might be aware of, that Mr. John Edmund has had a tavern called Heritage. It was in Nuclear Plaza, but they closed down in 2003. He has maintained his license, though. And then this location would be called Heritage on Fremont, and it would be like a jazz and blues club. So we're very excited.
And was there any timeline given as to his process and going through the process with building and development services?
The, really, the work that they've done right now has been maintenance on the property and kind of cleanup. There is an existing tenant there, the pizza parlor, but they like to freshen it up and spruce it up. So I did ask them, and they indicated that within six months, they hope to be open.
Wonderful. All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody wish to comment on this? Please come forward, state your name.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. And this is my stomping ground, and I would really like to see something get in, going on in there. Tony Slotman is putting a lot of money in there on those lofts, and, well, again, I'd like to see something in there pretty quick.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public wishing to make comment? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. I'll close that. And Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, I move for approval of Item 63.
Thank you. There's a motion? Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good luck. Item Number 64, DIR 48086, Board of Regents of Nevada System of Higher Education for possible action on a request for a development agreement for the College of Southern Nevada on approximately 42.02 acres at the northwest corner of Elkhorn and Grand Montecito Parkway, APNs 12517401006 and 12517801004. This is in Ward 6, Councilman Ross's. Planning, commission, and staff both recommend approval. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant present? They are not. Anyone wishing to be heard on this item?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, please.
I represent one half of the applicants. This is, since this is a development agreement with the City of Las Vegas, I represent the staff team, who put their time in to come up with this. If you'd like, I can give you a very brief presentation on the development agreement and what it contains.
Thank you, please do.
Let me give you a little history to begin with. We first went into a development agreement with the College of Southern Nevada for this particular site back in 2008. There was essentially a two-year time limit on that. We renewed that again in 2010. Unfortunately, that development agreement also expired before we could renew it, and so that's why we're here before you today. There have been a couple of conditions that have changed in the interim. One particularly is, a portion of the site, approximately five acres, was originally designated for the construction of a U.S. post office. They are no longer interested in that parcel, and so we have removed them from the development agreement. It is the indication of the College of Southern Nevada that they would like to have Opportunity Village occupy that site and be their partner at that site, just as they are on the West Charleston site. There are a couple of other terms of the agreement that are slightly different over what you have seen before with this. Number one, in terms of the timeframe, the College of Southern Nevada is required to construct at least one building within five years from the effective date of this ordinance. So there is a term for them to perform that they do need to meet as part of this new agreement. Also, with the construction of the RTC Park and Ride Facility adjacent to them, they will be required to improve their portion of Grand Montecito Parkway within 60 days of the effective date of this ordinance. So they do have some responsibilities there relative to that. We also have some language about shared parking between the RTC and the College of Southern Nevada. And then, the term of the agreement itself is for a 30-year term with a possible 15-year extension. fifteen-year extension. Those are the significant changes to the agreement. The site plan remains relatively the same, with the exception of the post office parcels, as I've already indicated. And with that, staff is recommending approval of this development agreement.
Thank you. I see the name on the chart is still Oso Blanca, instead of Oso Blanco. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Anybody wishing to make comment, please come forward. Hearing none, seeing none, and Councilman, I close the public hearing. Councilman Ross?
I would tell Mr. Fag, thank you for that presentation, to familiarize the council and refresh our memories, and all the hard work that junior staff have done on this with the college folks. I would move for approval.
Thank you very much. Please vote. There's a motion, and please post. Love the colors you used. Didn't come through. There it is. Please post. That motion carries, and I do echo, and I'm sure the council does, Mr. Fag, all your work that you've done and continue to do. It just makes it wonderful, and your team. We'll move on to item sixty-five, and instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the City Planning Commission meetings in dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. Thank you, done. And citizen participation. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of City Council. No subject may be acted upon by the City Council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, any single subject, as well as the amount of time, any single speakers allowed may be limited, and we will limit it to three minutes. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Please come forward, state your name.
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, two forty North Nineteenth Street. I've got some cleanup items. First of all, I'd like to thank you for the bike rack out in front, and the dryers in the bathroom, in the restrooms here. I'm reading from Sahara, the magazine. MIT's recent cradle-degrade comparisons of drying methods give paper towels a slightly better grade than dryers, except for the super-efficient Dyson Airblade, which we have in our restrooms. So, that's good. I gave you a package of some stuff there. The gist of the matter is that there's going to be some changes coming down, and it's going to happen fast. That was with that thing in determining the first item in there. I'm fascinated by numbers. I'm not a numbers cruncher like Councilman Beers, but I'm fascinated with numbers. And they were comparing Lake Michigan, the capacity of a human brain is the equal capacity of the fluid ounces in Lake Michigan. And it was talking about how long it would take you to fill Lake Michigan, one fluid ounce at a time. But you're putting one fluid ounce in every eighteen months, but it doubles each time, each time. And what, the same thing is happening in computerization right now. And the article will tell you about that. I also include in there that, I always include one thing in there when it comes to compounding things, and that's with compound interest. If you can get your kids to read that article on compound interest, it's out of a textbook, to how to fund their retirement within three years at a hundred and sixty-six dollars a month for just the three years, and you'll come out with about two million bucks. But on Front Line the other night, it was talking about retirement plans. And if you saw that, the people are going to, are going to come to a real shock when they find out that between sixty and sixty-two percent of that retirement money that they think that they've got, it's not there, because the banks and the brokerages have taken that for fees. And I mean, it's, these are things that we have to prepare for in the future, when we have another housing debacle or another people, the boomers that don't have any money and no place to live. I mean, it can hit us like a sledgehammer. And I'd appreciate it if you'd read those articles. Thank you very much.
Thank you for giving them to us. We will move on to item number sixty-seven, and this is Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual City Councilmembers during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the City Council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. Councilman Beers, we'll start at your end. Anything going on?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, as a matter of fact, pardon me, Tuesday, May fourteenth, we're going to be having beers with beers out at Angel Park, the wonderful city facility. That'll be on a Tuesday night from five-thirty to seven-thirty. Live music from Nick Mantara starts up about six, six-thirty, and it's usually a very delightful evening out on that patio overlooking the Rose Garden and the Putting Green. We will have coffee with the councilmen at the end of this month, on May thirty-first, eight o'clock in the morning, also at Angel Park. Yes, they don't just serve adult beverages. My family, you may recall, Mayor, a few months ago, and Councilman Ross, we had a little bit of a work task in front of us to kind of smooth things over between the community theater groups and the library district, to get those performing arts centers back open. And my family and I went Monday night to see Camelot, the old Rodgers and Hammerstein classic, and it was really quite a nice production. And that will be continuing on through May eleventh, with matinees on the weekend, eight seven, eight seventy-five, twenty-nine, if you want to check that out, first Friday, of course. I'm sure that Ricky and Bob will talk about that. One final thing to note is an evening of pop and doo-wop for music lovers this weekend at the Suncoast. Larry Chance and the Earls, The Happenings and The Chiffons, a couple of groups from Yore will be making some cool music. Tickets only sixteen bucks. Suncoastcasino.com.
Wonderful, from Yore being Yore.
That's Y-O-R-E, for those of you who thought it might be Y-O-U-R.
Thank you. All right, we're moving straight on down. Your turn, even though we like to conclude with you, Councilman.
That's okay, Mayor. Thank you very much. In our continued partnership with Nevada Childseekers, I do have a young lady that we are looking for. Her name is Kaitlin Byram. She's sixteen years old. She's five foot ten, has green eyes, and green and brown eyes. She was last seen March seventeenth in the area of West Charleston and Jones Boulevard. She was last seen wearing a faded blue jeans and a gray hoodie, and she may be carrying her purse with her personal belongings. Kaitlin has her tongue pierced. If you have any information leading to where this young lady may be, please contact Nevada Childseekers, seven zero two four five eight seven zero zero nine, or the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, seven zero two eight two eight three one one one. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilman Mayor Protam, you go.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce my third annual Ward Four Feature or Teacher Award Ceremony. We've spent the last month or so working with each of the elementary school and middle schools in my ward to have the students work with the principals to select the best teacher in that school, that they consider the best teacher, and, and number one, represent their school, and number two, we're going to have an award ceremony. It will be held Thursday, May ninth, at five-thirty P.M. at Justin Meyer and Levitt Middle School, located at four seven one zero Quadrelle Street. This evening, that evening, we're going to present each of the teachers a glass apple that has their name on it, honoring them as the best teachers. So, I just want to publicly announce who those teachers are. From Ernest May Elementary School, it's Christine Jeanette. From Gereheim Elementary School, it's Donna Stanley. From Ernest Becker Elementary School, it's Karen Walsh. From Lummis Elementary School, it's Margaret Park. From Eisenberg Elementary School, it's Scott Allison. From Connors Elementary School, it's Constance Caroliayus. From Mark Carey Elementary School, it's Bonnie Smith. From Sheila Tar Elementary School, it's Lee Gugino. From Meyer and Levitt Middle School, it is Nancy Jones. So, congratulations to all those folks for being selected as the best teacher from their school in Ward Four, and looking forward to the ceremony, May ninth, at five-thirty P.M. at Levitt Middle School. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Coffin has nothing. Councilman Barlow, get it together.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually...
I'd like to thank you very much, Your Honor, for that.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, see, he does have something.
I was going to go and have lunch after this nonstop seven-hour meeting, and I think I will do that. God bless all of you out there. Thank you.
You see, he does have something. That's great.
Yes, I'm actually going to announce Councilwoman Tarkanian's event, if you will, and I'm glad that you all have it on the overhead. The Councilwoman would like to invite the community to the Ride for Reading. The Las Vegas City Council, RTC, and Councilwoman Lois Tarkanian invite you to the Ward One Ride for Reading, taking place Friday, May tenth. This event is free from nine A.M. till noon, nine-thirty A.M. till noon. Sign-in, of course, is at nine A.M. The ride begins and ends at the Regional Transportation Commission, six hundred South Grand Central Parkway, is where the RTC is located. And they also want you to know that you can pause for a ribbon-cutting ceremony for a new bike and pad facility at Rotary Park, which is located at nine zero one Henson Street. Healthy refreshments while supplies last. Donated books will be delivered to the Vegas Verde Elementary School, which is located at four thousand El Parque Avenue. Donations of newly, of new or gently-used children's books will be accepted at drop-off boxes throughout the city. And of course, the Councilwoman would like to thank her sponsors, Lookout Kids About, McDonald's, the Las Vegas Clark County Library District, as well as the Clark County School District. And as you can see, for more information, you may also go on to the RTC Bike Guy at RTCSNV.com for more information, or you may call six seven six nineteen fifteen. And please go out and support the Councilwoman and her staff as they continue to do great things out in Ward One. And Mayor, the only thing that I have is my annual Coffee with the Councilmen, which takes place May second, which is tomorrow, at Starbucks, located at Bonanza and Rancho, from nine A.M. to ten A.M. Please come out if you'd like to speak with me and my staff in regards to anything that you have going on, or to receive an update on what's going on in Ward Five. Thank you.
Thank you. Tomorrow, Thursday, May second, I'll be joining area residents of many faiths in celebrating our National Day of Prayer at Grant Sawyer Building at twelve noon. Let us all keep those who have suffered through recent tragedies in our prayers. Obviously, Friday is First Friday, and so it's going to be a great time downtown. Make sure you come down and participate. Saturday, May fourth, we have the Race for the Cure, the Susan G. Komen Race to Raise Funds and Awareness for Breast Cancer Research, with start time kickoff downtown at the Third Street stage on Fremont at seven A.M. on Saturday. For more information, please visit the Susan G. Komen Breast Cancer website. On Wednesday, the eighth of May, please join me for coffee with the mayor in Ward Six with Councilman Ross. We will be at Lulu's. Breads and Breakfast. Breads and Breakfast, that's a cute name, at six seven two oh Sky Point Drive, from eight A.M. to nine-thirty. That's Wednesday, the eighth, eight to nine-thirty. Stop by for a chat, or a photo, or just a wonderful visit with our wonderful Councilman Ross for a good laugh or two. And that's Lulu's. On Thursday, May ninth, I'll be on hand for the unveiling of the plaque designating our beloved El Cortez Hotel as a historic landmark. Come down at four P.M. to share in that celebration again Thursday, May ninth. Boy, am I busy. Saturday, May eleventh, these are my weekends, I'm killed. I will be at the Starting Line for the five K race to benefit our own YMCA. What a better place to be. The event will be held at Town Square, with the kickoff beginning at eight A.M. For more information, go to LasVegasYMCA.org, LasVegasYMCA.org. Our next City Council meeting will be held on Wednesday, May fifteenth, two oh one three, right here, council chambers, beginning at nine A.M. Pardon me, I'm going to sneeze. And that's the end of that. And so, we are moving on now to item number sixty-eight. Closed session. Upon duly carried motion, a closed meeting is called in accordance with NRS two eight eight dot two two oh to discuss labor issues. Our next item is that we will be going into closed session for an update on labor negotiations. No motion is required, and following the closed-door session, the council meeting will be adjourned. Thank you. And, well, there is no closed session, so the council meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. I love this.
All right.